When do we get started? Paul's got the way that we can perhaps deal with minutes. Welcome to the Norton Planning Board meeting of March 26th. Once again, the surroundings look a little different. We're in the middle school because we have a fairly healthy agenda and no senses. We'll have a few more people joining us tonight. Have folks had a chance to look at the minutes for March? We have minutes of March 5th and March 12th. Have folks had a chance to review them? If so, is there a motion? Tim?
I have one headed to the minutes of the 12th to adjust the size of the big shot to 2,500, not 25,000 square feet.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other corrections to either side of minutes?
Just on the March 12th minutes of references approving the March 5th minutes at last meeting with the vote listed. So did we not already cover March 5th?
We did.
We did. I think I gave it to you again.
No, well, we made changes to them.
Yeah, I gave it to you again because of the changes.
So the March 5th minutes have already been approved?
Yeah. I think that was just the corrected version that was provided to us.
Yeah, I gave it to you.
So the only minutes that need a motion for tonight of the 12th, there's been one correction from 25,000 to 2,500. Anything else? Is there a motion to accept the minutes of March 12th as corrected?
Second.
There's been a motion. That was a warning. There's been a motion on the second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here for? Could you folks, either one or both of you, identify something, maybe tell us a little bit of background on this?
Sure, if you'd like it on a microphone. Yes. Good evening, Dan Mosluski.
How's that? My name is Dan Mosluski. I'm the general manager of TBC Boston. And before you, we have a proposal to essentially subdivide a parcel of land we purchased back in 2016. I believe originally it was about 5.87 acres that we purchased by way of town auction. And when we did buy that parcel of land, we really only needed about a half acre to an acre of the land in order to make some changes to the golf course, to make some competitive enhancements, in order to secure the ability to host a PGA Tour event in Towne and Norwood going forward. So through that process, we completed that renovation and the intention from our ownership group was to never keep that land. We wanted eventually to give back or sell a portion of that land to an interested party, if anybody's interested. So that plan is to essentially carve out a parcel that we'll retain as needed by the golf course, a buffer zone, just to protect the golf course a little bit. And I think it's just under three acres would be a possible left of letting Oakshue.
Any questions from board members?
The reference on the plan is no clear zone. Was that something I was previously on this plan? Was it added at this point?
We did add it, that's correct.
And its function is just to identify a tree line or?
Just to put a tree line buffer in for the golf course. Some of it is for aesthetic purposes and some of it will be for security purposes going towards the tour event, just to make sure we have some sort of forestry in between a golf course and where some of it potentially goes to homes.
So that's going to be like a reference in that deed on that lot?
That's right.
Preserve that as what? As easement?
My best guess would be as an easement, correct?
Any other questions from members of the board?
To clarify, please, and if you said that, I apologize. Parcel, any ideas to show on the joint, what's on that parcel right now?
I have a draw in front of me. Is that the one that's purchased away from Oak Street?
Yes.
So parcel A is the closest parcel to funding the golf course, where we did do some work using a ballpark of all acres. So that portion, the turner place, we'll retain. And then the front portion, then above Oak Street, is the portion that we would then look to sell to somebody. We've had some interested people looking to build a home out there, so that would be the goal, basically, to let somebody develop it.
Right, no, I didn't understand that. I was just asking what's currently on parcel A?
So there's nothing out right now, other than a small portion has been cleared, just some trees, a little bit of grass, maybe a small portion carved out, but mostly other than that.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Any other questions from members of the board? If there are no other questions, is there a motion to act on the A and R?
I'm moved. Second?
And I assume this motion is approved?
Yes.
Discussion, there are none. All in favor of approving the A and R, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. If you could start signing at that end and the mile wire was done this way.
No big deal.
I'm going to get him to sign that one.
Just the one I signed, I don't want this one.
Just the one, well.
He's just too old to sign that.
I guess he should have.
I like to be in some of the places.
I think there's one more.
Let's see, your person, yeah.
We're all friends.
The other one's not.
Oh, okay.
Couple of minutes ahead of time of the part of those that extra time, so next item on the agenda is continuance of special permit for A4, 308 East Main Street, Burning Hills. If you folks can get set up and continue. If you can make it up here, Mike, it'll be a little easier for us to see. Actually, if you want to get ready for the stage.
Mike, if you want to get started, the amount's a couple of minutes ahead of time.
Good evening, for the record.
Good morning, my name is Paul, Henson Sherwood Associates, I represent Burning Hills, the post division. We had sent a memo on three, I think it says 3.6 by another agent in court, talking about the different additions that we've made to the plan since the original public hearing. We placed the fence along the town property with a swing lane for the Towne and Norwood. We proposed and postponed planning a coastal rail fence, which was requested by the conservation agent between the protection basin and the weapons. We have distances from the lot lines with the protection basin, basin added to ten. We proposed a detail for a concrete washout area, which is shown on the plan. The actual location will be shown, so actually we'll go through the conservation process. We have shown the proposed spaces and the numbers of spaces have been added to the plan. The number of spaces was 108 with 38 loading docks, and all the loading docks have been shown on the plan. We're not proposing any new loading dock charging deposit. We haven't made progress in what we actually need.
Questions from members of the board? Your status of conservation commission, Mike, is are you?
I am not submitted to conservation. I want to get to the special permit. Obviously, if this is voted very, very firm, I would expect that the condition would be any substantial changes to the plan would have to come back before the planning board review.
Again, this is, I believe, our second session on this. Any questions at all? If there are no questions, questions from the others? Then I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Now, the special permit was for your time.
Still moved.
Second.
Forty to, forty-four, two. There's been a motion in the second to close the public hearing. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there is a sense of extension, but Mr. Siegel has accused himself of being a butter. Is there a motion to approve the special permit as modified with tonight's information?
Still moved.
Should we make a contingent on conservation approval?
I think that's understood. I don't know if we can make ours contingent. If in fact there is significant change to the plan that you see before us, then we have, if it's significant, we'd have to start the special permit process all over. If it's a minor modification, we can treat it as a minor. But I think we have to act on Rome with the assumption that conservation commission will do its due diligence and take its action. So there's been a motion.
Second.
Can I just clarify? You had mentioned the motion was for a special permit, but there's a site plan as well?
Right. Thank you. In any case, we'll have that and both separate. So we still have that on special permit 44. There's been a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of special permit 44, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. There is also a site plan for the 49,400 square foot warehouse expansion. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve the site plan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion on the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, as I go through the conservation process, I'll keep in touch with Paul. Thank you very much for your consideration.
We are approximately a half hour ahead of schedule, so we can deal with some internal items. We have three sets of bills. First, amounting to $1,622.20 payable to Horace Lee Woodton. That's review for Norton Village Center from the out of the grant. The second is also for Horace Lee Woodton, $4,489.90. That's for peer review of Blue Star Buildings 1 through 5. And lastly, Horace Lee Woodton, also a review of Blue Star, in this case Building 7, total amount of $1,464.57. I'll pass these around, and then whenever someone feels prepared to make a motion, I'll entertain.
Joe, is there any way we can get these ahead of time, or at least? So we don't have to pass them down each team?
We'll box, we'll box, drop off.
Yeah, who wants to go for that?
Well, we used to get it just a, a, a one sheet. The review was on.
I can do that.
Of course, today we're ten. Yeah. Yeah, I'm there.
Something I have to consider on the agenda, and it's not pertinent to any specific, would it make sense, Amy, while we've got a little time, for you to touch on some of the answers to the questions that Paul posed?
She has a question. It's on the general question.
Were there general questions?
Well, that's the status discussion. It's just to that, that petition, but it's up to them. It's the applicants' decision if they want to pursue as much of the payment or if they want to move, which is a couple of weeks.
I'll just give my opinion.
No, it's not so much that. I just want to fill in the time that the board's response to the question. That's not really a question.
I, I, no.
What I was wondering is if you could, in the event, it's not only the agenda per se, respond for the board's benefit, members of the board, given Mr. Paul's question.
I could only do that if I, again, repeated them during the public hearing, because they do pertain to their, they do pertain to the solar project.
Okay, we, I assume everyone's had a chance to review these three sets of bills. If so, are there any questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Any other updates from Paul to share on anything? Just to fill the time.
Can you tap there?
No. It's just the talent.
We are meeting next week, yes. You don't want that. We're talking about the center. Yeah, agenda yet or anything? Or any other items that have come up?
Any other items to, we haven't, what is the, 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 change?
Okay. Well, we, okay. Tim, can you talk about the center?
That's one we have. I didn't expect to be wrapped up with the first couple of items quite so quickly. So the next item on the agenda is not till eight o'clock, so we have a few minutes. We have a couple of things out, since Paul is here, I'll ask you to give us any updates as to what may have been happening since our last meeting. And then Tim on the Norton Center, Village Center study and project. I'll turn it over to Tim after Paul.
Okay, well, Tim can talk about the Village Center. And a couple of things I just wanted to mention is, one of the initiatives that we will soon be launching is the update of the 1998 Town Master Plan. We received some grant funding, and we are starting to work with the, we will be starting to work with the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District in Tonon, who's our regional planning agency. The plan itself is, the plan looks at about a 20-year horizon of what Norton will look like, you know, in 20 years, and it will look at issues such as how land is used, or it will look at economic development, housing, recreation. In other words, in some communities, it's called a general plan, some call it a comprehensive plan, but this is a master plan. So this will be an important tool for the board and the community, so that when we make, it'll help guide decisions in the future for this town, whether it's zoning bylaw changes or capital improvement changes or investments. This will be a plan that people can use to see, does this align with this plan? So we intend to also have a subcommittee, potentially with the, with the board acting as that role, where the board will advise us who they would like to be on that. And that's, we're still in the very early stages of the master plan. As far as a future agenda, recently, there was a petition that was passed regarding making changes to the solar bylaw that was passed back in January at the town meeting. You'll notice that there is a notice published today in the Sun Chronicle, there'll be one next week, and the amendments will be here or with, in front of you on April 9th. So, Tim, we want to talk about the Village Center.
Sure. So the committee working on the Village Center plan had their final workshop and presentation, is it two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, third, or two weeks ago from yesterday? Thank you. And we got a lot of great feedback during the process. The council is now working on their final report, and they're going to be delivering that in May, I believe. And we can continue to move forward from there. So anybody in the audience participating in the workshops and the sessions, thank you very much.
Paul, did you remind me if I penciled in meetings for every Tuesday except for the 30th, we still on for the second, ninth, 16th, and 23rd?
Not the 23rd.
23rd is.
23rd's the election.
Oh, I'm sorry. The 30th is happening.
You're scheduled through the 23rd.
Not, not, not.
I mean, the 16th comes back. Through the 16th.
So three more meetings. Second, ninth, ninth, 16th.
Right. I guess with that, as you will have a new board, we had discussed with town council about having Amy conduct a training, a joint training with the zoning board of appeals. We'll need to arrange that, but it makes sense with the election coming up to, to conduct this training, which would deal with issues like open meetings and the roles and responsibilities of the board. But it would be good to have a joint training, since a lot of the responsibilities overlap, and it'll give you all an opportunity to talk with each other as well. So I'll be coordinating with Amy here soon enough to, you know, coordinate her schedule as well as with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals.
We'll, we'll hold tight to 15 minutes, folks. Just as a reminder, we'll operate under the same process that we did for the last couple of meetings on, on Fairland. I know it's near and dear to your hearts, but in order to get, give people an opportunity to speak, we're going to limit to three minutes. We're going to ask the applicant to update us with any information that the entity has provided for his application. I'll then turn it over to council of the others, with a summary of any issues that he may have. And then we'll open up for 30 minutes to the others, and then we're going to ask the town council to give us some guidance on a couple of legal issues as pertains to this particular application, and we'll see where that all takes us to nine o'clock. We will stop at nine on the Fairland project, because we have three other items pertaining to agenda after that. So if you could stay with us for 15 minutes, and we'll pick it up at eight o'clock. Thank you.
Actually, our attorney, Charles, is going to introduce us. Evening, I'm Charles Murray with Dayton for the real estate department. I think we've all received letters from you and confident hires from you. I hope to be here tonight to update you on some landscaping, landscaping requirements, some other preparation, and to answer whatever questions you might have. We're hoping that you have a nice, you know, respect to the program, and you'll want to continue. Thanks. So, Stacey, we started with an update on the landscape revisions that were submitted last week.
Good evening. So I'll give a brief overview of the information that was submitted, and then introduce one of our registered landscape architects, Staples Point, who's here this evening as well, to address any related questions. So the materials we submitted included three revised permit plan sheets, the three landscape sheets, specifically C501 and 5230. We revised those.
We will stop at nine on the Fairland project, because we have three of items pertaining to agenda outside. So if you could stay with us for 15 minutes, and we'll pick it up at eight o'clock. Thank you.
Actually, Attorney Charles Laverie is going to introduce us. Amy, I'm Charles Laverie, Dave Tocca, the real estate guy. I think we've all received letters from you and confident hires from you. So I was here tonight to update you on some landscaping, landscape revisions, smaller preparation. And to answer whatever questions you might have, we're hoping that at the end of the night, you'll be equipped to throw a couple to you and you'll want to receive. Stacy, we started with an update on the landscape revisions that were submitted last week.
Okay, so I'll give you a brief overview of the information that was submitted, and then introduce one of our registered landscape architects, David Point, who's here this evening as well, to address any related questions. So the materials we submitted included three revised permit plan sheets, the three landscape sheets, specifically C5.1 and C5.30. We revised those within the permit plan set to remove screening that had been depicted on the letting property at 222 Bay Road. So this is at the world's least most common project. We also incorporated on-site plantings in that area. So what we did, if you remember, there's very narrow area that's not within bog, within our property. So we've actually taken a portion of the primer bog and proposed plantings within it, so it will become an actualized area. And then also proposed some plantings, just on upgrading up on the side of the primer bog on our property. We also submitted an alternative screening exhibit for that property, which is different screening. On that property, that's something that if the others are interested in having that undertaken, next time, we'll be ready to do it. And I do have hard rock screening, actually, and updated revision to that exhibit that all passed out momentarily. And then finally, we updated the cross-sections to reflect the change in planting for that area of screening, and also to add certain information that the planning board had requested, specifically to show different height viewpoints. So there's a six-foot and a 16-foot height sightline for each cross-section now. And those sightlines go to the front of the panels as they did before, but also extend to the rear of the panels. So without the pass out, the alternative exhibit and the Michael David Point will be there on us. Thank you.
Again, I'm David, the real estate point, Fields and Thomas. So as a result of this project, our client, Nexon, had asked us to prepare a screening plan, utilizing the largest plants possible that would be effective in terms of screening, but also would be the best plant suited in terms of survivability, which is as a result of some of the sizes. And so what we've done here is we've incorporated primarily the eight plants, which will make it again look more of a naturalized area than not so much a contrived formal landscape in any way. We also provided some smaller landscape plantings in terms of smaller trees and some trunks, as some of the larger trees will grow taller in age. It may be similar to some of the water pine, as they grow taller, the lower limbs will tend to get shaved out and those tend to drop off. Where those smaller plantings that we proposed, we will let them continue to provide the screen at those lower levels. We've also committed to providing some additional planting to screen the residents at the end of Polar Drive. We propose that was one of the annuals provision. And that would be similar to the plantings that we proposed at the 19 Fairland Wing. And as Stacy mentioned, the original plantings that we proposed at 222, the plantings that we proposed there are more of a redwoods type of planting in terms of glass spruce, ephalosporum, and red maple. Again, because those are areas that potentially will be inundated with water, or just have kind of a wet feet condition as it's referred to. And those were the specific plantings that we thought were most appropriate. And that would be providing effective screening, but also be the appropriate ones in terms of the survivability based on the conditions. So with that.
Thanks, Stacy. So since the last hearing, I also added some additional information to answer some of the questions that were raised. I did a follow-up letter regarding noise and EMM and that. Do you have a second, quick piece to put that down now, or it was in the, the job box? So the answers, how you did that, that's to answer the questions that were raised on that, on those issues that were raised at the last hearing. And also, we submitted a letter of intent that we have with the owners of the property, the local authority, the local government company, to allow for curving along the majority, to allow for landscaping along the majority of the area. And we also did reach out the next morning, study the next morning, to others, and offered to meet individually or group setting with anybody who was, was interested in doing so. And also just being in shortly before the hearing started, and I don't have time to put it out, but it's in the directors' mailbox, I have it from the Cranberry Roads Association. We're looking to the, the concept of doing these solar projects on cranberry rocks in general, and how the, the association believes that it's a good option for, for certain departments that are interested in great portability. So with, with that, we, sorry, what? Okay, the Cranberry Roads Association. So with that said, we are here to answer any questions you may have, and look forward to speaking, or continuing to discuss the project we are working on, closing out the other day.
Counselor Corvus, I'll turn the floor over to you.
No, pass questions to the director questions to him first, I was sure you wanted-
I'll do that after you've made your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The real estate gentleman, again, to the record, at the end, from the law firm, August 30th, Cranberry Roads, that represents a bunch of the others in the area. I guess I'll start just to kind of remember where we are at this point. Norbert was a conservation commission theory that was supposed to be held last night on this project. My understanding that it was postponed until April 8th. I think it would make sense for the planning board to keep this thing open until after that process is completed, just in case anything comes out of that. In addition, after the last meeting, Adam did reach out to hand forward the others, myself, and I believe some on his own. There's a meeting scheduled with the others for this coming Sunday, March 31st. Out on the site, I don't think we set a specific timeline, but it's set for March 31st. There's obviously a possibility that some change come to the plans from that meeting. There's some feedback about screening, whatever it might be. So it could be, I mean, it'd be important to keep the hearing open until after that date, to cases that may change the plans that are necessary. I want to start by really talking about the letter from Nexon's attorney that was submitted, I believe, yesterday. First, regarding effective date of the zoning bylaw, and there's been a lot of back and forth from that. The attorney said that the recently adopted amendments are in effect. As I said at last meeting, that's not really accurate, in my opinion. We agree, or I agree, that they are effective as of the January special town meeting, but they do not go into effect until they are published as required by chapter 40, section 32. Hopefully, I know the town council's here tonight, so perhaps we could put a there, a bit on this issue. There's a difference between the effective date and when something goes into effect. The bylaw does not go into effect until it's posted, and then once it's posted, it is effective as of the special town meeting. A law, bylaw, statute, ordinance, whatever it might be, can have a retroactive effective date, that's the case here. The planning board of that meeting cannot bring up this matter until it is in effect, which doesn't happen again until it's been posted. The Nexon's attorney also mentioned his letter that posting of the amendments are the material to the management before the planning board. Again, I would disagree on that. The attorney states, since the amendments did not change Article 13 or Article 15 under which Nexon applied, then the planning board does not have the right to amend them to take effect. The management doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Yes, Nexon has applied under Article 13, and more importantly, from the point here, under 15, site plan approval. But they're only able to apply under Article 15, site plan approval, as a result of the amendment. Thus, the amendment is directly tied to the application, the application can't really stand without the amendment being in effect. In fact, while I was reading the attorney's letter, it kind of raised another point in my mind that I had in mind before. I'm not even sure how someone can apply for approval under the bylaw, not only before the bylaw meets effect, but even before the effective date, as we know, Nexon applied back in December, before the town meeting even happened in January. I'm not really sure how you'd apply for somebody when it doesn't even exist, but we'll see where that goes. Finally, regarding the attorney's letter regarding the water resource protection district special permit, that was a question, as you know, that was raised last meeting by one of the planning board members. And he says that the special permit is not required under Article 14, because the use will not render impervious more than 15% of the law. I think the first question is that the planning director, in his letter to the planning board dated January 17, stated that the project will require a special permit pursuant to Article 14. I'm just curious, if the director, why does that, and still will these get to be chosen?
You've raised, you've raised a few questions that frankly border on legal procedure. Welcome, Adam Town Council, and respond to some of those, thank you.
Thank you. So just a little bit more on water resource protection district matter. As to whether we use vendors or impervious, I understand the point the attorney was making, that I was thinking the panel being angled down, the water going to hit pit and sort of run off, and then into the ground, and therefore it's not really impervious. I guess I'd be curious to know how much of the precipitation will actually run off to the ground below. It's not going to be 100%, it's impossible. Some of them will probably evaporate, or some of them will just stay on the panel. If you think of your carpet shield after a drained all day, you go out there at the end of the day, and the windshield's still wet, doesn't all run down. I bet that something like that would happen with the panels, and maybe that would make it naturally impervious. And it is found out by the way that the, the board disagrees, and a special permit is required. I just want to put the, the two of the standards that the board was buying, or the grant special permit under Article 14, and that is that the proposed use must in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quarrel or quantity of water. And the proposed use must be designed to reward this exposure disturbance of the soils, the probability drainage, predication, and other water-related natural characteristics on the site. The above criteria cannot be met, that's supported by Nexon's own statements in the two recent letters to the Conservation Commission, in which they state, which they stated, quote, given the age of these cranberry logs, it is possible that a true water-defining water is not present. The applicant is amenable to a condition requiring that the proposed pilots shall not extend it through or below the water-defining water, if found, unless a hyper-kinetic evaluation is undertaken and determined that negative impacts to groundwater supply, including to the cranberry rock or to nearby residential wells, would not occur. So they don't know that there is actually going to be adverse effects to nearby wells. So clearly, the standard of the special permit under this section under Article 14 can't be met, which is that proposed use must in no way adversely affect the quarrel of water. Quickly, just one question I guess to the applicant that he managed to later, regarding 22 Bay Road. My other question there, whether or not he intends to use the easement over the 222 Bay Road in order to install and maintain solar panels. Finally, by that again, as you provided some additional information tonight, responding to some questions, past questions from the board. I sort of went through some of those videos again, that my clients were quoting, and they're still going to be outstanding applicants. For example, the fact that the inverters would be on the skid. At one of the meetings, I think I actually did, the first one back in January, where the planning board members asked, how does having the, having the river on the skid hinder or amplify sound transmission? The answer from Nexon was, I don't think it changes it, I wouldn't think it would make a difference. I don't know what it would be, or what that would look like. It seems like an important question to have answered. Then, high vibrators, again, in the first meeting in January 27, and that the extent of where vibration will be felt, I don't know. That's something we know more about, once we know what the actual subsurface is that we're evaluating to. And then I put an answer to the raise where it is effectively felt. Effectively 28, where it said, I don't know, do generally works. And said, they don't really be accessible levels, but it is about works. Seems like that would be the information the planning board might want before you close the hearing and take a vote on this. Finally, the government of the agreement, I just heard that it's made a letter in 10, I have not seen that, but we posted online or not. That was a communication that was going to be raised tonight. I'm curious to know what that says, because when I talked about it before, it said it's a tentative agreement. And so that obviously raises a concern, as well, what if it falls through, what's exactly planned? How concrete is that agreement? Perhaps Flora can answer that question again, I don't know, I'm not assuming. And then on the full device screening, I think there were some questions about that. I didn't see that on the revised plan, but maybe I missed it, I don't really, Stacy just mentioned you want some screening there. But again, the last time I checked, I don't believe, one before there was a statement, I don't believe that's actually going to be that either. That was raised last time, if I'm familiar with that, to see some screening for Polar Drive, I don't think the planning board today showed that. That was all I had for that.
I'm going to open up to questions for board members, either to the applicant, or counsel regarding for the others. Are there questions from any board members?
First question I have is, you've given us this purchase and settlement. Does this property, about immediately your property, or is there some, I'm looking at this plan, it looks like there's a gap between the property line?
The political property does above our property directly. It's, it's an oval-shaped property that the access road for our property is right, right here. And, and there's this fingered land that sticks down this way, and a strip that goes up all the way. It's essentially includes from the very eastern edge of the bar to Bay Road, and goes from our access road all the way to 222 Bay Road. And that's all that it is, which directly above our property.
I'm looking, I'm looking at your plan, C5.1, and I see this planting under this strip on the right-hand side. Is that the land that you're talking about, that this plant is in?
Yes, this, this entire strip of landscaping is within the property.
This, this plan, it looks like it's not above your property, is there space between, is that correct?
Right, that's the, the bar road that we're leaving over the virgin to the access.
That had an easement on it before?
Right.
So you have an easement on that land, but you don't own it, you still have an easement on it?
Correct.
And a sold land after the easement on the right-hand side of the easement?
They, they will, they're selling us a portion of, we, of the land, we're purchasing this island portion, and then entering into a potential agreement for the right to install and maintain landscaping along this corridor.
Okay, but there are seven, remember, you had an easement to plant, is that correct?
It is, it's, oh, actually, it's kind of, they're selling us this southern portion of, of the property. Just right where our access road is, and there's that, that fingered land that sticks down. They're selling us that small portion, and granting us a, and a right to install and maintain landscaping, not the rest of it.
Okay, at the last hearing, we talked about some concern that was raised regarding megahertz.
Yes.
Have you been able to provide any data, or relative to confirmation of how that affects, and what part, distance that affects it?
Yes, that was in the letter that submitted last meeting, I had it. Um, it's, after doing more research, it's, uh, we need to distinguish between, uh, hertz and decimals. That hertz is, uh, is the measure of the wavelength of the sound that's generated. And human ears, or humans can, can hear anything in between 20 and 20,000 hertz. Anything below or above that is inaudible. And so for these purposes, the important thing is to ensure that when we're looking at a decimal rating, that the decimals were measured in between that full range of 20 to 20,000 hertz. And so they, um, one of the studies that I had submitted, uh, a couple of months ago, I think it's called the study in acoustic and EMF per public health projects. And it actually has a really good explanation of that and how they went about doing that in their study. And so they, they studied, uh, the 220, 20,000 hertz. And found that, um, the, the hertz at which neighbors produce noise were, or something occurs within total pairs. Um, and so it's, it's at like 68 and 124, 5,000, 10,000, something like that. But essentially, um, what, what matters is that when you are looking at a decimal rating, that that decimal rating includes that full measure of wavelength, which, um, it does in the studies that I've provided, uh, that the study I just mentioned, as well as the, uh, the white paper that I submitted regarding the noise produced by our fingers, uh, which is, they're, they're rated at 64 decimals per inverter. And we also, uh, the director and I also had a call with, um, with an acoustic engineer band. Um, and he mentioned that it was the, the, the hertz. And we're about of what, um, the hertz level sound is at. Um, and, and, you know, over the distance, the, um, it doesn't really matter what the hertz level is because it, it eventually fades into the background, just like any other noise. And Paul, he's currently on this, representing that, but that's what we learned from the acoustic engineer.
Is the distance in terms of this dissipation the same as decimals? Or is there some, is there some study that's confirmed that?
Uh, he, so the engineer said that it does, I believe it does not dissipate at the same rate as the decimals. But, um, at, just as the, the hertz will, um, depending what tone is produced, it will, um, it will be, you know, the oldest efficient distance will give you that, that tone because it's essentially, um, uh, it's essentially vast by the ambient noise levels.
Is there something around the inverter that can block the noises that we're concerned about? That you've installed, that could be there, that would be, how now is this a sample?
I think there are, and this is something that we researched further over the last month or so as well. And something that the acoustic engineer we spoke with said can't be done. There's, he, he gave a few examples, um, of what could be done. And also, um, you know, one thing, you know, that we mentioned at the last hearing is that, I mean, you know, we, we, based on what we provided, we don't believe that noise will be an issue. But to, um, you know, to provide that, to, to just, you know, the airport would be willing to, um, do a sound study, which would capture all of those issues pertaining to not only decimals, but also hertz. And, and I think we have a good sense for how that could, uh, work in terms of this process based on the protocol that.
So, so there, there is a process blocking, or are you just saying it should be studied?
There, there is. So, so what we know was typically was done with a, a sound study. They said, um, the, the acoustic engineers will go out and measure, um, ambient noise levels. And then they will, um, look at your plan and determine, you know, what hertz levels and decimal levels all of the equipment will generate. And then, um, they're able to extrapolate what the, the noise levels will be at the nearest residences. And if it appears that there will be an issue, they would recommend some form of mitigation upfront. If it doesn't appear that there would be an issue, then no mitigation would be required. And, um, the project would be built. And then there'd also be a, um, an ASB survey to ensure that the...
The question is, is there mitigation, let's say it's sound. Is there mitigation that you can do proactively as opposed to waiting for a survey? I don't know if it's cost prohibitive. I don't know if it hurts your productivity. Uh, but if there is one, I'd be interested to know what it would be and whether it's plausible.
I, I would say the, um, the worst case scenario would be to have to put a cement wall essentially around the inverter location, which is, which is certainly possible. Uh, we would want to, we prefer not to have to do that, but that's something that could be done. Um, and I don't, I don't remember, um, the, off the top of my head, like the other mitigation measures that he mentioned were, but, uh, he certainly said there were a few. And he said, you know, the most drastic thing to do would be to, to put up a cement wall around the inverters, which he, he has, he's worked on several projects before. He said he's committed a with, um, that's required.
The question I have, and I have time to counsel to help us, but relevant to, uh, uh, the water protection district. Beyond the purposes, one of the other elements goes to enlargement or alteration of existing use that does not conform to the Water Resource Protection District. I don't know whether that would be relevant to this project or not, and I don't know if we can, so could I ask?
Yeah, Charles, the way I listen to what's been done, uh, that the use, the existing use does conform to the requirements of the, um, of the Water Protection District, so it might be. So it's, it's not an issue that we need to address.
We review that entirely. That issue is whether or not the enlargement or alteration would have an impact in terms of whether it qualifies under the, um, Water Protection District?
She's going to touch on it.
Okay, enough. The other question I have is, um, I know you were, as council pointed out, it was scheduled to go to conservation yesterday. You continue that. Uh, this is a particularly sensitive, uh, project in terms of the environment. Um, I don't know why you would actually seek to have a try closing out the public hearing until actually, in light of that, you continued that hearing. It wasn't their continuation. I don't know what the purpose of that continuation was and what's still outstanding.
Uh, we, we actually wanted to have the meeting last night, but the, um, conservation agent suggested that it be continued so that, um, the, the conservation agent and the peer reviewer had more time to review the revisions that we submitted. And that's actually going to be based on the last, uh, the last two years. It hasn't been our request. And the water protection act presumes that this form of use is working for the concomprations the concombs work. In fact, you don't have to apply for order petitions until you apply for every level for which you need to be accepted for building permits. So the, the regulations presume that it's possible to underway and hopefully prove it before the concombs establish work.
I have just one question separately for Beals and Thomas. Um, in terms of the revised screening plan you submitted, I noticed that a lot of the new angles are based on the mature height of some of the plantings. Obviously, I'm not asking you to forecast what the weather is going to be like over the next decade, but just a timeline of when, your estimation of when those plants would reach that mature height.
Uh, it depends on the type of plant along and obviously the conditions that are on their soils. As you said, weather, in terms of precipitation, all that, but probably within a 10 to 15-year period roughly.
One comment I have, I do appreciate the revised drawing that was provided for, um, 222 Bay and showing the sightlines, um, both at initial planting height, um, mature height. And I think I've only seen the one for 222. Is there any other abutting properties where the same drawings were completed? Um, would you elaborate on that?
Sure. So the, um, the plans that we submitted last week, uh, the revised, um, fancy plans, uh, that safe revision was done for all of the cross-sections that we did. Um, and the, the 222, where they should have, probably was not part of that plan from last week just because we, uh, we, we did a further evaluation of the, the property, yeah, 222, to demonstrate the, what screening could achieve if we, um, if we planted essentially further up the hill. So that's, it was just to show that, you know, that is what we'd be willing to do. And it is, um, you know, very effective if the, um, if the resident there is, is interested in having us do that. So the, the, the plans that you received last week, um, have, let's see, do we have a little bit of cross-sections?
So this was the overview sheet which showed, sorry. This is the overview sheet which shows the extended cross-section line to the rear panels.
Right, so the, um, the visuals, uh, the cross-sections were done for, um, these five angles, which are representative of, um, you know, these four are done to capture, um, all of the views along Bay Road. And then, um, this, uh, this cross-section, third green, um, represents the, the views from both homes there. Um, this, we get it for the, the taller of the two homes.
Not fair, Mike?
Correct.
Okay, um, in regards to the information you provided on the frequencies, you were referencing a project labeled Seilon in Cuschnut and Wareham. And I believe that's where those, that's how I read this. That's where the, um, examples of the, um, frequencies were, were listed, um, in harmonic pairs. Um, do we have from the manufacturers of any of this equipment, be it the inverters, be it the panels and motors, do we have the actual intended or expected frequencies of the equipment? Um, I know we're referencing the, the Wareham project, but I'm more concerned about what we will actually experience here.
Right, and I, I was not really applying that. But what I was able to determine is that the, when they determine what the decimal levels are, they, they do so, um, you know, within that range of 20 to 20,000 hertz. So, um, they, they are capturing the full range of human hearing within their, you know, within the study that you do to determine how many decimals are produced. So I don't, I don't know exactly what frequencies that equipment will produce, but we do know that, um, that for any noise that a human can hear, it will not exceed the amount of decimals listed in that data sheet.
Okay, and then I guess I might reply to that, would, would still request that, that information must exist somewhere with the manufacturer on existing projects, existing, um, you know, um, fields, farms that are out there, that we can, um, have a sense of what that is and, and what the possible, um, range, um, that we might, um, realize was just a project, should it go forward?
Sure, and I think, um, you know, I've kind of exhausted my capacity to answer that question this morning. I would, um, I think that's a very appropriate question for, um, a, an acoustic engineer in a, in a review of the, um, you know, in a review of sound for the project.
Okay, and, uh, final question, um, I do appreciate the, um, willingness for the sound study that you referenced. Um, do you have any, um, perspective on the timeline for that? Of how long that would take, what the process would be, um, to accomplish that?
Right, so, uh, the timeline that, uh, was discussed with the acoustic engineer we spoke with was that, you know, after, um, at, at some point, they had to establish a baseline. And that takes about, um, I think he said they, they leave microphones out for about a week to establish, uh, the baseline sound in a, in a given area. And, and then the, um, and then they essentially, you know, look at the plans, do all the research they need to do on the various pieces of equipment, and have, um, a determination as to what the noise levels will be, um, at the residences nearby. And, um, the, the engineer we spoke with further recommended that that, that the initial study be, um, be reviewed by a, a third party, kind of a review of the, um, of the sound study. So what our, um, thought was, is that, you know, this is something that can be conditioned for the project and submitted to the, um, building department prior to, um, receiving any building permits. And we need to demonstrate that, um, that we, that we are not, um, violating the state's, uh, noise law and the state's noise pollution law.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. Can I have a moment?
Uh, any questions from any other member of the board?
What is the total number of buddies that this affects?
The total number of buddies, um, I don't remember the total number yet. So we, we sent out, so there's two different radiuses we have used, 100-foot and 300-foot. Um, any particular one that you're not interested in, like that?
Well, from the west to the east side of the cranberry block, so all of Bay Road and the butter, there's personally effects in sight and sound. What's that total number?
So the, uh, directly adjacent properties, uh, I, I know in terms of having a direct view of the property, it's, uh, in our estimation, it's 11, um, that have direct views of the homes on the property. And, um, there are some additional homes, um, towards the southern end of the bar, um, that don't, you know, that see the bar, that don't see the part of the bar where we'll have, uh, panels.
Okay, so we, we sent out 163, I'm sorry. And a 300-foot radius, we sent out 163, who lends to a bunch?
Okay.
So 163, you're saying there's only 11 families, a lot of individuals?
Uh, 11, 11 individuals.
How many of the 163 or and or the butter have you been in contact with?
I submitted a, um, a list and a course on map of that on Friday. And, um, the, of, of, of the first one, the direct views of the bars, I've been in touch with you personally or through, um, their attorney. Um, and, um, let's see, I, I don't, I don't have that list in front of me. I don't know if that's in the packet or not. Paul?
27, 27.
27 addresses?
27 face-to-face?
No, uh, no, uh, the, 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 the half of those are represented by attorney gains. And so they were contacted through attorney gains. And then, um, I spoke with, uh, some face-to-face left contact information at Coach Holmes, that, or home, and, um, and director D. setting it, uh, also communicating with some of ours. Um, essentially got... and some of others, essentially got it.
Okay, the word I'm looking at is contact, so I'm sending out on a letter that you're legally officially contacted, somebody's sent a letter in mail, as opposed to you saying 13 people were contacted by a lawyer. This is public information, would you say about 90 days, late summer?
Correct.
Okay, so 90 days, ballpark, now, how many face-to-face, are people's doorsteps or phone calls that you've had with them, abutters?
Eighteen.
I have no further questions.
I think you guys referenced screening on Fuller, but it's not in any of the documentation received to date, so can someone explain to us further that, because it definitely is not on the maps that we've received?
Sure. So we submitted our revised landscaping last Tuesday, and subsequently that, we had, was when we decided to do the landscaping at Fuller Drive. So we did, there's a long week, it's a middle deadline, so we submitted what we could at that point, and our plan is to revise the next landscaping provisions, we'll include the Fuller Drive landscaping.
Okay, so almost quarter to nine, this is supposed to go nine o'clock, I'm gonna down the agenda a little bit, you know, what it runs to nine fifteen, but next on the agenda, the next, next person to be recognized is Amy Costel, who is with the firm called the Page Day Attorney Town Council. The questions that will be asked of Attorney Costel will be from the board, because she's here to guide us in terms of answering some of the questions that posed tonight, but other questions that have been posed earlier to her, in terms of what we are bound by, in terms of both the law and our bylaws, most notably, the most recent change in last town meeting. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Costel.
Thank you, Chief Cameron. I'll address the first two questions that have already come up, that were also posed to me earlier, which is, the first one is the effective date of the bylaw, and 48, Section 5 is clear, that the effective date of the bylaw is the date that is voted on at town meeting. With regard to the attorney general approval and publication of that approval, that is pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 32, which, General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 32 starts by saying, except for zoning amendments that were adopted pursuant to 48, Section 5. So therefore, the publication does not make the bylaw in effect. The bylaw is in effect when town meeting votes on it. It's definitely a confusing issue, and it causes a lot of, there's a lot of gray area, but the risk is all on the applicant. So if the applicant spends all of this time and wants to get this permit, the permit will be revoked if the, if the bylaw is disproved, if there's a disapproval of the bylaw from the attorney general. So that's, that addresses the effective date. With regard to your question on the Water Resource Protection District, generally, my answer to that is that all of these, all of these permits that they are seeking are distinct and separate, and therefore, even if they don't apply for a special permit for the Water Resource Protection District, the special permits that are, the special permit that is in front of you right now is for floodplain, there's also site plan in front of you right now. So you cannot hold up one of these permits just because they haven't applied for the special permit for Water Resource Protection. And the actual ultimate arbiter of that, of whether a special permit is needed or not, is the building commissioner. So they can get site plan approval, they can get floodplain a special permit, and then they go and they walk into the building commissioner's office and they ask for a building permit, and if it's his determination that what the water, that a special permit is required pursuant to the Water Resource Protection District, they can then, they have 30 days to appeal his determination, or they could apply. With, specifically with regard to your question that you had posed, in my, in my opinion, and again, in my opinion doesn't necessarily matter so much, it's the building commissioner who makes the ultimate decision, but the portion of the, the portion of the bylaw that you had cited with regard to whether a special permit is needed, and it's enlargement or alteration of existing uses that do not conform to the Water Resource Protection District. So if you go further, or if you go prior to that, in the zoning bylaw, under permitted uses, they have farming, gardening, nursery, conservation, forestry, harvesting, and grazing. So harvesting and farming would most likely cover predatory laws. So that means that it, that means that it isn't allowed use, so then it wouldn't fall into that category. I think, again, the category that it could fall into that requires a special permit would be the one that was addressed by, by counsel for the applicant, so, and also counsel for the abutters, and that would be, that would be subsection six, with regard to the The other question that was asked was, with regard to the, to the, they have an application for a special permit in front of you that because of the zoning change is not necessarily required. Again, it's there, all the risk is on them as to what to do with it, it's their decision whether to request to have it withdrawn, or to just render it moot, which is technically right now, in my opinion, it would be rendered moot. If it were withdrawn, and there's a request to this board to have that withdrawn, and this board has to grant that request, so this board could request, could grant that request with prejudice, without prejudice, or deny the request, and then just deny the special permit because it's moot. You know, there's a question then as to whether Chapter 48, Section 16 would kick in, which requires that the same project with the same requested relief can't come back for two years. There's, the argument could be made that because it was a procedural denial due to the fact that it was moot, it wasn't made on the merits, that Chapter 48, Section 16 does not kick in. But I think that, from what I heard, they, or from what was in one of their letters, they just plan on leaving it right now. So I'm not really sure, we need to address that, because again, the only, the only permits that this board can vote on are the permits that are in front of them, actively in front of them, right now. There was a question with regard to whether, whether the special permit that's required under floodplain, which is Article 10, if that requires, I'm sorry, if the, if floodplain requires that when you, when you are analyzing whether to issue a special permit under floodplain, if you also have to invoke the provisions of Article 10, which is the, which is special permit provisions. And in my opinion, because Section 13, which is floodplain, it does not reference, it does not reference back to Article 10, and in fact, it provides its own special permit requirements, that it does not require that you make a finding pursuant to Article 10. It does make, it does mean that you do have to make findings pursuant to 13.4C, which has two distinct requirements to it. And then the other question was with regard to conditions in a, for a site plan approval decision. In my opinion, conditions can be imposed on the applicant, however, conditions can only be imposed if there's a, if they are based on findings. So this board is going to have to make findings before they issue a decision, and then the decision would have conditions that are based on those findings. Findings need to be based upon either testimony at a public hearing, or submittals within the record. So for example, you know, you could make findings based on, you could make findings that the landscaping is sufficient, based on the landscaping plans that are submitted. You could make, you could make a finding that the landscaping is not sufficient, based on the plans that are submitted, and then you could have a condition that increases the landscaping, or screening, or what have you. And again, that's just an example. And so those were the, those were the questions that were posed earlier, and if there's any others.
Just procedurally, in terms of, you mentioned findings in regards to the site plan, where in the process of us potentially closing the hearing, would that fall? So we would close the hearing, act on a special permit, and then those would take place after the special permit, but as part of the site plan review?
It's like review.
Just backing up one step, you said the existing permit would say, special permit would say applied under the existing bylaw, would become moot? If we don't do anything, would it be triggering something, would we have to take action and declare it moot, or declare it drawn?
They did in their letter. Yeah. So going back to the findings, you want to make the findings in the special permit and site plan decision. They're separate decisions, so they would be separate decisions, and you could make findings in each one. My, my advice, my recommendation would be to make sure there's findings in the site plan decision though, definitely.
Other board questions? Again, procedurally, in terms of the findings, I assume those findings can be verbalized or summarized, either as part of the open hearing process, or the hearing could be closed, and then the findings generated thereafter.
Correct. It's, it would be my advice to close the hearing and then generate findings, and the reason for that is because once the, once the hearing is closed, all evidence is closed. So therefore, everything you have in front of you, you have everything in front of you that you need.
Other question?
Inasmuch as both the site plan review and the special permit focuses on our attention on some environmental impact, query whether, what council mentioned that awaiting review or finalization of the conditions, oil and conditions, but conservation conditions are a program that we should, we can, or we should look to, or at least getting some finalized confirmation from the conservation commission as to the status of this project.
So unfortunately, it is the applicant's choice whether to continue a hearing or close a hearing. So therefore, if you feel that you need conservation to weigh in, or that you need conservation to make a decision prior to you being able to make a decision, for example, if there's a scenario where you ask for the hearing to stay open, the applicant says no, and requests that the hearing be closed, then you need to deliberate, and you need to make a decision based on the information that you have in front of you. So there's a risk that you don't have the information that you need in front of you. But you cannot, we can't, you can't make the, you can't make the permit conditioned upon, upon conservation approval or anything like that either, because they are separate and distinct permits.
Any other questions of council from members of board? I just want to summarize so that my head is clear. Notwithstanding the statement that the bylaw has not been posted, that is not pertinent or germane to the zoning bylaw, is there any benefit to waiting until action has been taken by the attorney general, or we simply assume that whatever the outcome of the attorney general's office is, is borne by the applicant in terms of risk?
Yes.
Okay. And again, notwithstanding the fact that we apparently have a special town meeting, that what's to reverse the action taken in our last town meeting, wherein solar, large-scale solar facilities are no longer a matter of special permit, but are indeed a matter of right, there is action to be taken at a special town meeting to reverse that. Again, that would not have any bearing on what would the outcome of that may be, that would not have any bearing on this application.
Correct. If, if for example, the, if for example, the petitioned article passes by, by two-thirds a town meeting, the, the building inspector would not be able, the building commissioner would not be able to issue a building permit, without sufficient relief.
And then lastly, again, for me to understand, under normal circumstances, a special permit requires a higher threshold in terms of achievement, accomplishment, I kept forgetting section, section 10, that does not apply, first of all, in this case, because a special permit for a solar facility is no longer required, but given the fact that there is a special permit sought in the floodplain, that higher threshold for special permit consideration does not apply in this case under that section, I believe, 14?
13.
13. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
There is, there is, there is separate, there are separate requirements under Article 13 for floodplain, for a special permit. So there are, there are certain findings that you have to make with that special permit.
Question number?
The last statement you said, I just didn't hear it, when you said if the revised one that's coming up on the 7th is passed, then you said the, the building inspector could or could not issue one if it was passed?
They could not unless there was proper relief, unless they had the relief they needed pursuant to that new bylaw, which would be special permit relief.
So they would have to go for a special permit if that's passed before this, this permit is decided?
No. This permit could be decided right now.
Okay. And but if it's passed, you're talking about future, future projects, not this project?
Unless it's not.
Just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so this project, if it were to move forward, and then the article is approved at town meeting, the building permit obviously hasn't been issued yet. Basically, the building permit is not issued prior to that time of the article, then they need to come back to the board for additional relief under the new bylaw, or the new new bylaw, so that we'd have to do this all over again subsequently?
New new bylaw, what's new there?
They're currently working under the new bylaw, which is...
You're calling this the new bylaw right now?
I'm calling the current situation the new bylaw.
Okay, got it, okay.
And then if the new new bylaw were to pass at town meeting, then would this project need additional, would this specific project need additional relief when it came up for a building permit?
I'd have to...
Because the rules will essentially change on the midstream and the project?
I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at what changes exactly with the petitioned article. But again, that's not, that's not necessarily for consideration for this board. So the applicant has to decide what permits they need, they then apply for the permits, they actually cannot rely upon this board telling them what permits they need, it's on them, it's not on us to tell them what they need. So they need to decide what permits they need, and if they think they have everything, they then go to the building commissioner, and he makes a determination. But it's not up to this board, it's not up to the zoning board, it's not up to conservation. The applicant has to be the one that says, here, here is what I'm requesting.
Thank you. I think it's partially from my own brain, partially also everybody else in the audience as well.
Sorry, I'm a little confused in rather than call new, right now, a large-scale solar facility is a matter of right, does not require a special permit. As I understand it, and I've seen the petition, but as I understand the focus of the petition, it is to require the large-scale solar facilities be subject to a special permit. The fact that this application has been filed in an atmosphere where a special permit is not necessary, in fact, it is... not necessary, in fact, it is a matter of right, I understood that to be the ruling set of bylaws, notwithstanding what might happen in the future.
Correct. Correct.
I'm going to ask counsel only because, again, I wasn't going to do this, and I don't, this isn't going to be for brothers, but if you're going to raise a legal point where counsel is here...
Yeah, just two legal points that town counsel mentioned.
So I'll stick with the current topic, and I want to go back to the effective date versus prescriptive effect issue as well. On the third issue, you only get a zoning freeze, meaning grandfathering, if you get a building permit, from my favorite quote, a building permit or special permit before the first publication of notice of the public hearing on set by law amendment. My understanding is that the publication was made today for the planning board's hearing on April 9th, on the verge of petition, petition to amend the zoning bylaw. Given that neither a building permit nor a special permit was issued before today, they do not have a zoning freeze under Chapter 48, Section 6. So therefore, if the zoning amendment that is being voted on on April 17th were to pass, that wouldn't apply to the current situation, not the change that was made in January. I would also note that 48, Section 6, only talks about a zoning freeze for a building permit and a special permit. There is no zoning freeze for a site plan approval. There's a case on that. The only way to get a zoning freeze for a site plan approval is if you then subsequently got a building permit as well. So again, you had to have gotten that before today, because that is when the first vote was published for the hearing on April 9th. And another topic, I can continue, or I can let town council...
I don't think that anyone was alleging that they had a zoning freeze. I think that the purpose of the conversation was that this board can only focus on what's in front of them right now. So what is in front of this board right now is an as-of-right use of site plan and a special permit for floodplain under Article 14. That is what was being relayed.
Absolutely. That is one thing that hopefully cleared the confusion, where if the planning board works towards...
Pardon me, but I guess one, my other point is that this board cannot be, it could be considered arbitrary and capricious for this board to be anticipating what's going to happen down the road. This board can only look at what is in front of them right now.
Fair enough. I was just trying to answer that question. It seemed like there was some confusion. But yes, the planning board only acting from its power, they can certainly approve this application, but then the town meeting approves the new amendment to reverse the old bylaw amendment on April 17th, so it completely went up the approval that the planning board might have been tonight or at the next meeting, that was my point. Quickly on the effective date versus the date of effect, town counsel, in the respective disagree set in the union of Chapter 40, Section 32, the except language that except the exception is only by law when it takes effect is provided for in Section 5, Chapter 48, only refers to the attorney general approval. But there are several sentences in that section which talk about when you submit to the attorney general, et cetera, and then they full stop, period, the next sentence or several sentences down, before the bylaw order amendment that takes effect, the show will be published. That is a separate requirement. There's no except language in front of that. The except language only applies to the attorney general, it does not apply to the publication of...
What is the exception then?
The exception is that the bylaw takes effect before the attorney general, but not before the publication. You can publish it anytime, you want to leave the...
Where is the, what is out with 48, Section 5 that specifically states that it's effective at the date of town meeting?
What's that?
48, Section 5, correct, specifically states that it's effective at the date of town meeting.
Correct. It is effective as of the date, but doesn't take effect until the publication occurs. It's a retroactive effective. You have to, you get to publish back in January, three days after the town meeting approved, and then it would have been effective as of January. It does not take effect until it's been published. The exception, the except language is only for the attorney general, not the publication.
Do you have a case? Do you have a case on that?
I don't.
I would respectfully disagree.
Surprise, surprise, we have, we have a difference of legal opinion.
You're not on, you're killing.
Yeah, it's on, but my battery must be...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
At present, for purposes of this board, the SJC has made clear the effective bylaw for the town meeting voted on in January. That's the bylaw that this board needs to operate under when it makes decisions. When the attorney general issues her decision, if it is favorable, which is almost certain to happen because some bylaws are almost never overturned, it will prove the bottom rule, as it all do, where the town clerk to publish. If the town clerk were to fail to deliver doing a publish, as opposed to having a legitimate action in a public location, I'm sure the clerk will do their job. If the attorney general rejects part or all, that rejection will be retroactive, and it will affect what we, that's what affected what relief you granted since you issued with the end of the year when the attorney general did. But as a matter of law, as we see tonight, the bylaw in front of this board, the opposite of the bylaw, as well as the end of the town meeting, we understand the risk that if the attorney general rejects all or part of the bylaw, we'll have to deal with whatever the result of the bylaw is. We understand that if you attempt to change it back to what it used to be and succeed, we may have to deal with that as well. But those are future hypotheticals. What we have now is an as-of-right use, it needs a site plan review, where we provide information showing that we meet all the site plan criteria, and a floodplain special permit where there are two criteria, that we are not in floodway, and we're not, and we don't increase the flood elevation by 100-year base flood, and we provide information showing how we corrupt predatory flood storage every time we foot, so we satisfy those two criteria. We know what the future will bring. We're not clear to ask you to rule on the future, we're clear to ask you to grant a site plan approval, a special permit, where we demonstrated and greatly tell the need requirements. Thank you.
Our microphone battery has died, so hopefully you can hear me. There's about six minutes left. I'm going to open it up for a couple of speakers, and then we're going to adjourn or continue the hearing. I mean, folks, you can stand in the line, but there's only six minutes left.
You're going to close us down?
Yes.
My name is Catherine Storm, I'm 13, Full of Drive. My family has lived in Norton for 24 years on this Saturday. I know we're still not Tannies, but we've been here a while. We have a beautiful home on the Albemarle side of town, and after my husband read the MLS listing for our current home, he lived in it, it's our core of our home, one that we can enjoy with all of our family and friends, our future grandkids, and for many years to come. On September 28th, we moved into, and I'll read the MLS listing, part of it, I know one or three minutes. New is better. We are opportunities to build your own sanctuary on a large, pristine lot, kept in the developer's standing for many years. This new home will be privately set on a cul-de-sac, a beautiful pine forest and cranberry dog surrounding your property. You will enjoy the privacy and tranquility of the setting, the view of Mulberry and Red Oak, the jogging trails and climate space you are guarding full and full track. We didn't hear anything officially about what was happening right in our backyard until two weeks before the special meeting. I heard it from a bank before Christmas, but since I need to have the last to get an occupancy permit, I never thought the town would allow something of this scope of devastation in our town. I heard that the cranberry dog was really so that the town could build on some of the smaller lots on a much smaller scale. We have plans for our backyard, which are now open. I have many questions, and I know that they can't all be answered. Who will pay the damages to our home during the actual construction? For example, cracked foundations, windows damaging to existing trees? The bylaw speaks about screening, but it does not specify that only the first floor has to be screened. I will view the flaws from every one of my 11 windows on the back of my house, and I want screened for each and every one of them. My wall will be very close to the panels. Google Pay that I have my own water tested every month, so my family's help isn't at risk of contamination from posts or possibly leaky panels. Plus, every report that says nothing can happen, there's another one that says the opposite, and my family's not going to be a good fit. Someone called the Way Tech, the solar, these people who are testing the sun, and stated that there could be a possible problem. At the way, for most, for the good part of the day, they would be facing my house for many hours. What would happen to the back of my house are common trees that could be damaged, and who will pay for it? The same company told, was told that the closest house was 285 feet close. I'm pretty sure mine is closer. He explained how the panel could make the noise, and he said, wow, that wasn't really close. Again, mine house is closer. After hearing about the crack street noise levels, what do we consider an appropriate level? You guys get to decide that, I believe. And how often will the panels, all 24,000 of them, be checked for damage endings into our cranberry dog and my home? I appreciate Mr. Powell, he has been, sorry, I know I butchered that, for coming to my home, and he's validating that I have concerns. To this day, I still have not been contacted by NEXN, even though I looked a little on my bills since last Wednesday, with my phone number, because I know I have to do math class outside on my property. I don't feel it's up to me to initiate contact, since I don't want the project, it's on them. It's a shame that all the way here have been in contact with.
Sorry, ma'am, could you just wrap it up?
Yes, bless it. I'm very grateful. I was part of the group that goes playground. I was president of high school for five years. I've been on the school committee for three, I'm running on codes, so I guess it's another group. We just heard from the town manager, we're probably not receiving level funding for school for six years. Believe me, I know the town needs the money, but now it would cost a lot of family's help and the other families that are affecting that is enormous hazard. Thank you.
Again, you folks can stand there, but Mr. Cogliano will be the last. It'll be 9:15.
Pure and simple, unhappy. They're shutting us down.
That's right. Please, Mr. Cogliano.
Joe Cogliano.
When the president's not here, William's not here.
Joe Cogliano, 202 Bay Road. The DOE R smart program guidelines...
Turn your mic on, please. Mic on, turn your mic on. There you go.
Joe Cogliano, 202 Bay Road. The DOE R smart program guidelines limit capacity to no more than 2 megawatts for solar projects in over 30 hours. To generate 2 megawatts of AC power, we would approximately 2.8 megawatts of DC, or about 8,000 panels instead of the proposed 24,000 panels. So that raises the question, if the regulation is to 2 megawatts, why is this project proposed 8.7 megawatts instead of 2.8 megawatts? Why is there a 6-megawatt battery needed in this project? 99% of solar projects at Mass had no battery. The purpose of the battery is to get around with 2-megawatt AC regulation and to increase the size of the project. Without a battery, at 8.7 megawatts DC, the project would generate approximately 6.2 megawatts of AC, and be more than three times the regulation of 2 megawatts. This project is permanently situated, must therefore have a battery to get around the 2-megawatt AC regulation, and to increase its financial benefits to those who are involved in it. The board must reject this project because it requires a battery, and because the battery can use to overcome the regulation. There is no language in the Norton bylaw that allows a battery. It is not an accessory. Its primary need for this project is to get around the regulation. It is not typical customary for solar projects at Mass to use a battery. The battery incentive for solar programs started in the fall of 2018. This is a new thing. When this bylaw was proposed to the town in January, it shouldn't include a provision for a battery, because this project requires a battery, and because of the initiative advantage of the incentive program. Because he thinks he cannot prove this project, that is not allowed on the bylaw. In regards to the screening, I understand Joe is a landscape architect, in my opinion, having been in the business for 70 years, more handy in that business. From a residential perspective, it's just simply not possible to screen this unless you're using furniture for short trees. He himself said that it would take 10 to 15 years. The project is at least 20 years, maybe more than 30. That means 50 to 75% of the project is going to be screened, 50% to 75% of the time, the project is going to be screened. Finally, I read the speeches with the director of the UMass Cranberry Station in Wyoming. There is no definitive evidence how cranberries might survive year-round with shaving over a solar system.
Mr. Cogliano, just wrap up the point, because time is up.
The only studies that were done were done for one to two months' duration. The bottom line is no long-term studies have been done. They're hopeful that they will work, but not have been done. So what does that mean? We shouldn't be doing a 30-year experiment on a project this size until that's been approved. Thank you very much.
At this point in time, we have three other items on the agenda, so we're going to have to continue, or if there's some other initiative that a member of the board wants to take as it pertains to this application, I'd entertain either a continuance or...
I would ask the applicant if they would prefer to continue until after the meeting at the site on the 31st.
I think, you know, in terms of the size of the project that we showed on landscape plans, as our landscape architect said, we did request for the trees that they used to be...
Adam, Raven, make the points that at this, we've reached a juncture where we have to either kind of continue or take some action. So the question was, do you want to continue until after your onsite meeting on the 31st, or some other time?
My request would be that the board condition that the light street plans, the screening as effective as what's shown on the plans, and it can be up to, you know, we can incorporate feedback from the others in terms of additional specificity in terms of plants and trees after the fact.
If the hearing is closed, you can't accept any information. So they should continue, but if not, you...
So I guess we'd be happy to continue to have that discussion.
I'll move to continue the hearing until the next available opportunity.
Second? Second? All right, there has been a motion to continue to April 2nd. Is there a second?
Yeah, there was.
I'm sorry?
Steve, it's Steve.
There's been a motion to continue, not sure exactly what time and what location. Obviously, stay tuned, but any further discussion on the motion to continue to April 2nd? I would ask you be prepared to answer one of the points that was made by Mr. Cogliano in that under the DOE R regulations, there's a 2-megawatt limit. I'd be curious as to what your view is on that. But in any event, giving no further discussion, all in favor of continuing until April 2nd? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, so we'll see, I'll see you April 2nd. Okay, running a few minutes late, but Mr.'s O'Neil and Deb, you all ready? We are. We are. Where is yours?
We, uh, thought through, uh, the, 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 and, 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 uh, to bring you up to date, we, um, had a conservation hearing last night where, um, we reviewed letters from Horstley Whitney were discussed, um, on March twenty-fifth. We received a stormwater review letter dated March eleventh, um, period review number four, and again on March twenty-fifth. So yesterday, we also received a March eighteenth, um, period review letter, um, on weapons. It's a little concerning as to why it takes a week to receive Horstley Whitney's review letters, um, you know, they're independent, unbiased, period review letters, being reviewed for some reason, um, and we're not receiving them quickly, but we, we went through these letters last night, um, they did not close the hearing, they did not vote on the project. However, it was noted, um, the outstanding items were housekeeping related items, and we are comfortable that there's going to be no additional significant plant changes to respond to those items. Um, we went through the two review letters thoroughly, every single topic within the letters, um, so that's essentially where we go on the conservation. Um, and we just have Jeff O'Neill reviewing a common letter we received and our response on it. We received a review letter from Red Bull Village, uh, discussing the traffic intersection and, uh, Brooklyn Street, and the earthquake response, uh, was also relevant from Cleveland Front, and that traffic intersection was reviewed by, um, our engineer, BSC Group, was also reviewed by the BASTA in D I R, and ultimately, which is being done in the West Corner, that was in the D I R related specifically to this one intersection. So written evidence as traffic signals are not oriented in this intersection, through the volume of traffic flow along New York Street, it doesn't need the warrants. The proposed signal in Route one twenty-three, Long Street, is expected to create gaps in traffic for left turns out of New York Street, making it easier for vehicles to exit the left. The proposal will work with the town road to start a short left turn market on New York Street, but it wouldn't allow the right turn vehicles to bypass vehicles waiting to turn left on New York twenty-three Eastbound. It is also noted that the unsig- and less intersections tend to show worse levels of service than what is actually experienced. Either one-way, mile intersection power or a road service F, it is difficult to quantify the overall baseline of experience and traffic design flow of the management, there will be improvements to the level of service on the New York Street intersection, and that was part of the traffic issue from the BSC Group. So I think that answers, uh, the, whatever we had discussing, uh, traffic in response, um, to clause one, rule six.
Are there questions on, on that letter or anything else?
I just had a question.
Paul, mic's not working.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, the, the letter dated March eleventh, when did you receive it? From Horstley Whitney?
From Horstley Whitney?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I don't know offhand, but I, a couple of things I want to make, I, I want to make clear on this is, the contract with Horstley Whitney, that was signed by Horstley, the town, and the, and by Condyne, gives Horstley Whitney up to twenty-one days to review any significant new material. But we also have a chance, as the town, to review Horstley's responses. We do not just pass it along, so, um, there are times when, and now particularly, this is all focusing on stormwater and wetlands, so this is in the Conservation Commission hands, so, subject to the review of the Conservation Agent getting her approval.
Okay. Yeah, no, my concern is, is, you know, if, if you received it, and the town received it on the twenty-fifth as well, um, and it's dated the eleventh, that's two weeks, that's, that's, I mean...
Again, I, I don't know offhand when...
That's very concerning to me, if, if that's the case. So I just, I just wanted to find out, so if we could find out when the town received it.
Sure.
Other questions? So, Mike?
Mic's not working, so...
Shout it out for Jack.
Great. At the last hearing, I, I raised an issue regarding the, uh, before I get that, with, with the chair's permission, I'd like to have a matter of personal privilege.
I, I saw your email, I didn't understand it, and I, I should have spoken to you. Go ahead, uh, and if there's an issue as you raise it, then I'll stop you.
Okay. Concern was raised by the applicant that one of the public hearings we had relative to a, a ZBA variance, um, at which he, under, he referenced the fact that I had publicly opposed the rezoning, and that I voted against approving the, the definitive subdivision. Uh, as I had previously expressed, while I did publicly oppose zoning bylaw, I would suggest there was a good segment of the town that did so as well. And to infer that by that decision, I would not be, or should not be qualified to sit in this board or to recuse myself in any way is kind of disturbing. Um, I accepted this position knowing that the town approved this bylaw, and, and I, I was okay with that. I mean, I had a right to oppose it, I opposed it vigorously. Uh, but once the town decided to vote for it, um, I was concerned with, basically, if you remember the, uh, town manager's statements about, we're going forward with this, but in and of itself, the zoning bylaw doesn't approve the project, it's going before the, the planning board and the conservation, and they're going to look at things to mitigate this, to make it work, at the same time looking out for the interests of the town. It was that understanding that I signed up for this board. Um, I had no intention, and although some people would refer it, of trying to kill this deal. It's not my intention. I see this as being that mandate from the town manager to look on behalf of all of you and all of the town people, to make sure, A, this is safe, and to see how we can mitigate the potential impacts on the environment, on safety, and everything else. In that process, yes, I raised two issues where compliance with the bylaws, there were bylaw issues that they had to take a variance with. That was my job. That's how I look at this, I look at this position. And I take a front with anybody inferring that for me to be here, even though I've opposed the, the overall zoning, uh, is to disqualify me from being an active and a real true, um, active participant in good faith in trying to make this happen, and to understand what's needed, and, and to make sure that the concerns of the public are addressed and identified, and concerns are included in whatever from it's presented. Thanks. Going forward on this project, um, last week I mentioned the, the concern had for a common driveway. Um, I don't know, I, I've raised that with town council. Uh, my reading of that was basically that common driveways could not and should not, uh, access more than four buildings. In this case, it, it accesses five buildings, two of which are warehouse facilities. Um, I would, I would suggest that under that bylaw, uh, under the bylaws which define common, common driveway, that it requires, uh, anything in excess of four to be separated by a twenty-foot buffer zone. I noted in the waivers sought by the applicant, they've identified the driveway coming, um, between four and five as being the only driveway for access for egress by the trucks, which means they're basically limiting entrance only on the common driveway between buildings of three and four. I would suggest, um, if you look at the plans, there's more than enough space to include the, the square footage for a two-way driveway into the retail section, some buffer, and if the applicants want to go with what they asked for, half of the thirty-sixth feet, eighteen feet, or the eleven feet of footing into Leonard Street, there's enough room to separate those driveways, so the retail sections are separated from the industrial part. And I think that's the safe way to go, I've exposed the retail, and, and that's something I really think is a safety factor, and that's why I've been pushing it. And I, I refer back to town council, uh, defer to them, and council believes that that is required, I'd like to force it.
On, on that point, I know you've raised the issue, and I don't view that as a common driveway to buildings one, two, and three. There's a very separate and distinct driveway between buildings four and five that services the back end of four and five. Yes, the parking lots are connected, but that's no different than the ML Square Mall or any other mall. If you want to go to Sears, you could, if you want to, start off at J.C. Penney and drive through the parking lot for whatever reason. If you've already been to J.C. Penney and you want to go to Sears, then you're not going to get back on the, the main drive. That is what this is. It has been mentioned, the option not connecting those is for those people in building five, if there is a food establishment at some later point in buildings one, two, or three, those people have to get back out on Leonard Street, drive up to, to the driveway off of Leonard Street, rather than use the drive, the connected areas internal to the project. I don't see the downside, but, but to the letter of the law, there is a driveway that services building four and five, and the parking lots are connected. That doesn't make it a common driveway.
I, I would, I'd ask, I'd ask...
You know, Orin, you've raised the point, I, I appreciate it, uh, but, points made and taken, and...
Can we get, can we get an interpretation from town council?
Have you had a chance to look at it?
Um, no, not, not in the detail of that. Um, I, I guess I would just, I would have to be referred back to the definition of, um, common driveway. I, I will say that, um, in general, a common driveway wouldn't be considered shared parking lots, um, but, again, I guess my, my main, my main concern right now is the fact that, um, they're here for site plan and special permit. If they need a variance from a provision of this bylaw, that is on them to get that, and they have to, that would be between, essentially, them and the building commissioner. The building commissioner determines that they need a variance from the definition of common driveway, then they would have to subsequently get that, and they would have to get it prior to getting a building permit. Um, so, what's before you right now wouldn't be contingent upon whether they have a, um, whether they have that variance or not, if they need it, and whether they have it. What I did look at earlier was the, um, provisions of site plan approval, um, in Article fifteen don't require that all relief required be, um, be obtained prior to, um, prior to site, site plan approval.
But it does require that, uh, are in accordance with the purposes to bylaws, um, and if in fact the bylaw defines a driveway as requiring access, limiting access to anything other than those four lots, um, I just see that as part of our responsibility as a board.
Uh, no, it, it's actually up to the zoning board of appeals, um, if they are in variance of that. This board can't grant a variance to anything in the bylaw.
I, I understand that, but if one is required, and I'm required to, to comply with the zoning bylaws and approve it, a special permit, I'm assuming they have to comply with the laws. If it's not in compliance with the zoning bylaws, we're asking town council, not anybody else, to tell us that, if we're, if we're able to do that.
Uh, I am not able to, I'd have to go through the plans, and I'd have to go through the bylaw to determine if the entire project is in accordance with the zoning bylaw. However, again, I, I reiterate the fact that that is the building commissioner's job, whether it's, whether it's in compliance. He is the zoning enforcement officer also, so, um, that would be up to him. I work closely with him, um, so I'm assuming that I would be a part of that, but, um, ultimately, that's his determination to make, and, um, there are, I, I have seen site plan review, um, sections of zoning bylaws that require all relief to be obtained prior to coming to site plan review. And I will say, from a practical standpoint, um, a developer would probably want to have all of their relief pri... Site plan should be last, because once, when you come before the planning board for site plan, everything is an as-of-right use, it's an as-of-right use, it can't be denied. It's basically to shape the project into, you know, protecting it, protecting other projects from the project, with screening, noise, things like that, landscaping, um, flow, pedestrian access, um, so, you want to know that you have all of your relief prior to coming to site plan, but unfortunately, it's not a requirement. There's no, it's not listed in the bylaw, and there's no case out there that says, no matter what, you have to have everything, all permits prior to coming to site plan. If they don't have what they need, and they go to conservation, and conservation makes them do a huge change, they have to come back. But unfortunately, there's nothing in here that says that they have to do that, that they have to go to them first.
Other questions, members of the board?
I have other...
Let me, let me just, um, Orin, a couple of things. You're persistent, God bless you, and I, I want to comment on, on, uh, your opening statement. To your defense, you were quite clear in your opposition at town meeting to rezoning this art, this area. Yet not, that notwithstanding, you were appointed to the planning board afterwards by a joint committee of the selectmen and planning board. So, uh, any, any inference that by virtue of your opposition, you somehow aren't qualified to speak or act on this application, I think is, is, is unfortunate. That notwithstanding, I'll give the devil his due. You are persistent, you're also eloquent. I think we all understand your concern with the common driveway. Your points were made, so unless there's another topic other than common driveway, I frankly want to take a show of hands to see whether people are prepared to act on this application after ten or so.
I had some more comments.
Do you have one more separate item?
Separate item?
Yes.
Um, your, your layout notes reference, um, let's say, C architectural drawings for exact building dimensions and the like. Are there any architectural drawings that have been prepared?
For, for building five, just about.
What about for the, I'm concerned, and then I, I was going to ask if there are any renderings. I'm concerned with the retail sections, the areas that are fronting Ains Street. Is there something you can provide this board to give us an idea of what that's going to look like? Whether it's architectural drawings, I don't care. Is there some renderings you have, uh, to make sure that it's consistent with the area?
At, at the opening, or when we started this current process, we did submit renderings of the entire project at that point in time. So there are renderings that are allowed to afford that project, and there's full set of architectural permits for building five.
Okay. The other reference you had on the, the notes, um, and it goes under the site plan review, was, was talking about signs. I know we put down the directional signs, the question, and you, you were just referencing, you're going to comply with the zoning bylaws relative to signs. I was just curious as to, is there some identification signs you're going to have for the business park, uh, and, and what would that look like, and where would that be?
Uh, as already announced, signs are proposed on the buildings and the facade, according to the zoning bylaws of order.
There's no pylon or something with regard to advertising the park itself, the business park?
There would be a single pylon sign in the corner of, uh, where this parking is, where the two spaces come together, there'd be a single pylon sign there.
Would that be for the retail sections as well as for the park?
Uh, just for retail section. Just for the retail section, hold. Because remember, we're also at place two downstream, and we don't want that sign to be too much.
No, I understand. I just didn't know, is there some big sign that's going to be at that corner that says, um, the...
Blue Star Business Park.
Yeah, the Blue Star Business Park, somewhere, as long, it's not, that's fine. With, in, in, down, down Leonard Street, I'm not concerned about. I'm just concerned if there's any kind of signage of planning along one twenty-three relative to the business park. And if, if there is, can we get an idea what that would be, where it would be, and the size?
Any signage or any zoning bylaws... Any signage or need, zoning bylaws, A will be required to have a permit, so that'll be approved by the building commissioner. But as I said, we're going to have one pylon sign in, inside that parking area, or not in the parking area, in where the two spaces come parallel permanently to each other. It'll need requirements for site distances and anything like that. And if we need, if it's big enough or it needs a special permit, we'll get it, or whatever is needed for that particular sign.
You provided an array of, of proposed waivers. It's just two that I had a concern, some, one concern I had is you referenced, you said if restaurant use presents itself, parking counts will be confirmed with the building inspector and brought back to the planning board. I believe that that conversation came up and we were concerned if any use beyond, required more parking than was currently required, that you would come back to the, to the planning board. And I note from the zoning bylaws that it could include food, grocery, private clubs, or sports facilities, and those would require more parking and I suspect, expect you to come back to us as well.
We've been able to say any use that requires a change in permit.
And to be clear, you continue to reference or have on, on the site plan, a drive-through facility next to building one. It is not, that is not true as now and it's clear that it's not part of this permitting process. Am I correct?
We would get necessary problems, save that user on that part of that building and bars of driving.
So at the last meeting, you requested to a continuance to this meeting. Are you prepared to have us close?
We're prepared to continue to close, yes.
All right. The chair would recognize, entertain a motion to close. I would move to close the public hearing.
You said second?
Special permit 479.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to cut you.
That's okay. I just wanted to read up the special permit 479.
Okay, so there's been a motion to close. Is there a second?
Right, right. Yeah.
Can the public have a question?
No, we've just, there's been a motion to close the hearing.
You and an essence.
I'm sorry, there's been a motion to close the hearing. There have been at least 10 to 12 hearings, sessions of this hearing, so it's not like the public hasn't had a chance. There's been a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of closing the hearing on special permit 481. Signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Which unanimous? The hearing has been closed. Is there a motion? Is there a motion on the application for special permit 481?
A motion to approve.
I'm sorry, 479.
A motion to approve special permit 479?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve special permit 479. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
And I defer to county council. I understand we've proposed to have conditions on this special permit approval and have a decision written, including findings, and at that point, it would be appropriate to then approve the special permit in actions of any of the same. There are numerous conditions and requirements, including putting in lights, putting in roadways, and a whole bunch of things that have to get addressed by this board. We need to make findings and determinations, and for us to make approval of this plan without those would be, I don't think, appropriate.
Correct me if, council. My assumption would be if in fact the motion is in the affirm, the vote is in the affirmative to approve special permit 479, that would be subject to both findings and conditions that can be both reviewed and discussed amongst the board. It's no longer open to either the applicant or, or to the, the audience. But there is no requirement that we have findings in place before we take action on the application, otherwise there's no point in generating findings if we're not going to approve the application.
That makes sense. Also, this is, you're voting on the special permit right now?
Yes.
Right? So you, so once you close it, you have 90 days to issue your decision. So by approving it tonight, you would then come back with a draft decision that would be deliberated upon, which would have findings and conditions.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Here again, motion is to approve, subject to the drafting of fi, of findings and conditions.
And should we submit any suggested conditions to?
Pardon?
Should we submit any suggested conditions to Paul?
Uh, yes, and obviously we, you know, we've had, just for purposes of both the board and the audience, we have had decisions that have been drafted by Paul. I've reviewed them and Steve assigned them, but those were perfunctory approvals and they were pretty straightforward. My intention on something of this scale is for the board, the full board, to review, alter, discuss those findings and conditions before those, that approval, that, that permit is signed. So that is my intention. The only other question I'll ask of council is, given that we are a few weeks away from election, can, does the decision, again, I'm not going to prejudge what the outcome of this is, but for the moment, let's assume it's approved. Can the decision come after the election where there will be two additional, or two new members? Are they not obligated by the vote of the, of the board in advance of their election?
They are not allowed to participate.
They're not allowed to participate in the drafting of findings?
Correct. They have not sat on any of the plans. You will have a quorum without two people, right?
We won't, uh, yes.
So you're fine.
Other questions? All right. Now, there's been a motion to approve special permit, subject to the drafting of findings and conditions on special permit 479. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, we'll do it by roll call because the charter requires a roll call at this night. Tim?
Aye.
Oren?
No.
Steve?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I too will vote aye. Okay. Don't go away because 481, I apologize to both you and your successor in time, but we're running a little late. 481, building seven.
Just a quick summary on building seven. We, as well, set building seven at the conservation meeting Monday night. We submitted, as of Monday night, we had submitted our recent and all three weeks prior, and just at the meeting Monday night at nine o'clock, we were handed the horizontal wood review. We did go through that line by line and as well, we feel there will be minimal changes at most in Carlos' review. It's mostly again housekeeping, numbers on applications, which should not be planned. So we feel there will be no significant changes to the plans as a result of conservation order was continued to the next hearing.
Questions from members of the board? Members of the audience, building seven. Yes, sir. Okay, before you, I didn't rec, I will recognize you, I didn't see that we had a member of the board prepared to ask a question.
It's my understanding that the conservation commission still has an open issue relative to where you're placing the basin as opposed to infiltrating further the tree line to the east of that project. That's still an open issue. I don't know that that, I believe, I understand the rest of it's probably minimal, but I think that was one issue that was not resolved at the hearing. Yes, sir. Am I correct?
The item being talked about is we're proposing the basin in this area. It is partially within the riverfront area. You're allowed to have drainage in a riverfront area as long as you document it correctly and provide all the supporting information. What we've given the conservation commission is an option to put the basin up here. What, what that does is we can put the basin completely out of any conservation-related resource area and then there is no longer basin in the riverfront area. So the project complies 100% by avoiding riverfront area by putting the basin here. However, both myself and the commission and the agent, basically, everybody attending agrees that this is a better place for the basin because this is adult wood trees versus this is private and mode maintained field. So we're just finalizing documentation to allow us to put it here. Our weapons scientists, we've hired an additional weapons scientist, like two weapons scientists, confirm that we will meet riverfront areas standards, weapons protection act standards, and that this, this location for the basin is more suitable than deforesting 20-inch, 30-inch adult trees.
With regard to that area that you're looking to, you have approximately, what, 20, you have for this site, a total of 55 truck bays. And noted, and that's basically the equivalent of one truck bay for every 2,300 square feet. In all of the other projects you have on this site, the other two, one, the one that building five at 220 square feet has a, a one per 340, 3,000, 492 square feet. And the one for the similar project, 120, 5,000, has only one for every 6,250 feet. Building, building four has 20, 20 spaces, building five has 63, and this one has 55. And the one you proposed originally for building five was 258,000 and you have 48 spaces. My question is, is this a building you're building on speculation and is there, is there any way we could reduce the size, even if it's on a future need basis, to avoid taking down the trees, those heavily, those big trees on the eastern part of the property?
This project is being built on speculation and there's approximately 30, 32 or 34 actual truck docks. The other is trailer parking. This is the type of numbers we prefer to see on a project of this size. These two buildings, we would love to have similar loading docks and trailer spaces with, you know, a normal distribution size. We prefer to have that available trailer parking. So this is a code type more typical to what we see on our land.
Would you, would you be willing, as you did with future parking, to provide for, I'm just looking at the numbers you have in the sites, and in one case, using their square footages, it would come down to either 21 in the case of building four, 37 in the case of building five, and 24 in the case of the original building five? And I just ask if there's some way you could, I'm not saying you have to eliminate it completely, but at least hold off on doing that until you can go back and actually have a need for it, given the fact that it is thoroughly heavily treated with old developed trees. And one of our, one of our, our goals and one of our requirements is to try to minimize the cutting of trees, and I was wondering if we could work, work with you to do that.
Well, Oren, the art portion of those facilities, they all need trailer storage. So we're designing that, so it has the ample trailer storage set there, including is when we go do the construction, we would like to close out the project and not have further construction and deforestation that could be a year to years down the road, interrupting all the business and operations for the tenants and everybody there. Our preference is to close it out, finish the building as designed, construct it, create a place, and then there's no more governmental resource impact after that point in time.
Just, just to confirm, what was the door count that you said there for docks?
32.
32?
No, total 55.
Oh, that's space. 32?
No, just dock doors versus trailer.
Ish? A little 30? Oh, yes. Yeah, so it's about one per 4,000 square feet-ish, which is a little higher than issue standard, but not much.
Sir, you had a question?
Good evening, 10, 9, 5, 4, 3. I've got this one before trying to play the board. Couple of my concerns is currently it's with the warehouses in the back. They're asking for 24% operation. The back warehouses are running residential neighborhoods and it's going to work with these facilities to track terrorists very loud, especially until 8:00 in the morning. So I'm asking us to be issued for this order, is to limit hours of operation, limit them from, that don't look trucking in from like 1:00, 2:00, 5:00, 3:00 in the morning. That's one condition I asked the board to review. Other condition would be Bostick. There is no question that Bostick will be a problem. Bostick, they need to store a lot of our road sidewalks and I would ask the board here to provide traffic study or some additional safety features for that road. It's dangerous. And my third question, during construction day, like we, their downtown version would be money to file on a Saturday from like 8:00, 4:00 to 5:00. And I asked the board, since the bus, neighborhood, the distribution facility, not really outside, the distribution could have limited just a money to file. I thank you.
Other questions from the board? Once again, we're at the stage of either a continuance or action, preference.
What's the applicant's preference?
Our purpose would be to close all of them.
I'll make a motion to, to close the public hearing for a special permit 481.
Second.
The motion and a second to close the public hearing for special permit 481 discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing on special permit 481, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Again, it wasn't unanimous, so, Tim?
Aye, to close the hearing.
Opposed.
Oren's?
Opposed, to close the hearing.
Steve?
Aye, to close.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I too will vote aye. The hearing is closed. What's your pleasure on action on special permit 481?
I move to approve special permit 481.
Subject to find anything?
Subject to findings and conditions to be discussed.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second by Frank to.
Just to clarify or point of discussion that we're approving, the motion is to approve both the site plan and the special permits. Is that correct?
If we can do them together, yes.
Yes. All right, let's get back to it. All right, the motion, I assume is friendly to the maker and the second to close, to approve both special permit 481 and the site plan associated with special permit 481.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
I don't, am I saying objections?
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, special permit 481 and the related site plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Again, roll call from Tim?
Aye.
Oren?
You didn't.
No.
No, I'm sorry. Steve?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I too will vote aye. And shame on me, but your reminder, Steve, of special permit 481, we did not vote on special permit 479, the associated site plan.
Correct.
Thank you.
I didn't specify both, so.
I'm sorry?
I apologize, I didn't specify.
No, that's fine. And I No, that's fine, and I didn't pick up on it. So, we have an approved subject to conditions and findings and conditions, an approved Special Permit, however, we've not taken action on the related site plan for Special Permit 479, Buildings One through Five. Is there a motion to approve the site plan associated with Special Permit?
So moved. I'm sorry?
We've closed first.
Did we reopen it or closed it since we closed that public hearing?
No, because you didn't close that portion. The site plan portion wasn't closed.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan for Blue Star Business Park Lots One through Five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on closing the site plan hearing on Buildings One through Five? Hearing none, all in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The closing is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve the site plan?
So moved.
Subject to conditions and findings and conditions. Thank you, that's what you're here for. Don't apologize for doing that again. There's been a motion to approve the site plan, subject to findings and conditions of lots One through Five.
Second.
And there has been a second. Is there discussion? Save us one step, do this by...
Who made the...
I'm sorry.
Just a second? Okay, thank you.
We'll do this by roll call for the site plan approval for lots One through Five. Steve, Tim?
Aye.
Orin?
No.
Steve?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I too will vote aye. So, we'll be drafting findings and conditions. And you are now approved, subject to conditions. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, both yours and the audience's. Last but not least, and I apologize for the lateness of the hour, but Special Permit 483, 54 Plain Street Solar Facility, this is a continuance from our last meeting. Our, the applicant is here. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, hi, my name is Daniel Server, I'm the Development Director with X Brady Incorporated. We're back at House Potter's Solar Facility in 54 Plain Street. Some updates since the last time we were here. We've heard a few concerns of the community and we've reacted in such a manner, you know, into that, we decided to remove a couple rows of strings, inverter, we've removed seven, seven, to get the inverter further away from the school. We think that's going to add an extra buffer and make it even harder to see and hear. And we hope that can make both the superintendent and residents a little more comfortable with the project. We've also raised that curb up from, in our last meeting, one foot to six feet, an extra sound barrier between the school and the project. Again, we're using string inverters to lower the sound as much as possible. And, you know, we think we've taken almost every reasonable measure that we think of to make this comfortable for the community and for the board. Again, with me is Rich from the Gladiators Design Associates, and address specific comments from staff and other changes we need on the projects and start lots physically based on.
Thank you. Good evening, Rich Tadovski, with the Gladiators Design Engineers. And we submitted revised plans, calculations, revised decommissioning plan, and also a series of response letters to address various comments that we received from the board at the last public hearing, from the planning department, from the school committee, from the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission's peer review engineer. So, basically, we also had a meeting with the fire chief, Ann Hall, to discuss his concerns about access to the property, with the roads and where he needed access road onto the site. So, the end result was a set of revised plans that we submitted to address all those comments. And as Daniel mentioned, part of that process was to also eliminate, basically was four rows of panels at the front edge of the property. And that reduced the project in size from, what the acreage wise, it was, we reduced it by a third of an acre, from 5.2 acres to 4.9 acres. Increased the setbacks to please be by upwards of eight feet. And also, this also increased the setbacks from the school, about 60 feet, about 250 feet to the school from the nearest panel now, that used to be about 195. And the playground area, it's been, decreased from 170, 270 feet to playground now, it used to be about 160 feet. So, that did decrease the project size. And should note that there is a, I don't know what else to call it, but a title on the plan, that the size of the project was reduced to 1.7 megawatts. On the plan that we submitted, that somehow got up to 1.8, I think that was left over from the later fire to us making the change and reducing the size of the project. So, the actual size is 1.7 megawatts DC, 1.37 megawatts AC. So, just wanted to make that note before you, so that we'll adjust that on the drawings. So, the distance from Plain Street now is 160 feet as opposed to previously it was 480 feet, that's the nearest panels on the site. Couple of changes that came up for the access road, that we had to increase the width to 16 feet at the request of the fire chief. And we also had to provide access that went completely around the array. So, previously, the access road would kind of end here, and we just proposed a grass path around there, but you want fire chief to request the gravel to go all the way around, 16 feet to this point, and then 12 feet in for the remaining, so preventing the complete array. So, I was at the request of the fire chief who made that change. Also made, thanks to address Conservation Commission's concerns, one of the items was to increase the setback over here, provide more wildlife order on both sides of the property. There was also a change to the stormwater system at the request of, basically resulting from the peer review consultant for the Conservation Commission, recovering the series of infiltration trenches and basins as opposed to detention bases we had before. Couple of other changes, as Daniel mentioned, the burn height initially here, based into the playground and school, we've increased that to 60 high as opposed to 4 feet that we saw on the previous plan. You know, the, with the removal of the panel, the nearest inverter now is 300 feet to the playground, and that's basically on the other side of the array here. And that used to be only about 280 feet, so we've increased that distance. And it's increased from, to 360 feet from the school building itself to the nearest inverter. That used to be 285 feet. So, lastly, you know, I think we submitted a decommissioning plan estimate that didn't take into account these salvage values, and the number increased to, I'm sure the estimate was $106,393. So, that is what we submitted. And again, there's been a series of response letters to address all the comments that we, that are addressed on the plan. And I don't think you want to go through before you're ready, but if you have any questions on any of them, we can do that. But there were basically four response letters to all the four entities. And we addressed each one with revised plans and some comments and letters. So, under that, I guess I'll open it up to questions.
Questions from members of the board?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, because it's not marked on these plans, so it looks like you've taken out one, two, three, four arrays from the...
Yes, four rows, yes.
Okay.
There's a total of about 160 panels.
Thank you, that was good. Thank you. In the new plan, I'm just sorry, having trouble reading it, there's something in the middle that seems to, they'll dip through it. I'm seeing it's referencing proposed infiltration trench.
Infiltration trench?
Yes.
Is that something new?
Yeah, well, we, if you recall the old plan, we had several stormwater basins and detention basins. And after reviewing the project immediately, we found the consulting engineer for the Conservation Commission, we thought that the soils would be more suitable for infiltration trench and eliminate the actual natural basin and just that stone trench that would be mining fabric and allow stormwater to just infiltrate and overflow as opposed to putting it into a basin. So, those kind of resulted from the peer review. And there's a series of them on the front side.
In the, to the, I don't know where we're identifying, there's something called a proposed 12 by 20 concrete equipment pad. What equipment is going on that?
I think that would be a series of electrical cabinets, and also the transformer for the project, but just other electrical cabinets would be placed on that pad.
Is that any noise or some, any noise generating from that equipment?
The only noise regarding that would be, some of the transformer itself would have a small fan, a lower cooling fan, and sometimes that, when it gets exposed to temperature, that kicks on and does some cooling of the transformer. The noise levels are still very, very, very low. I think what our information is, is that typically it's like 50 to 60 decibels at the most at a distance of five feet away. And these are essentially 200 to 300 feet from any, you know, other receptor. So, by the time that 60 decibels gets to those distances, it's reduced to virtually inaudible.
Is there, you also mentioned that the nearest inverter was 300 feet from the playground and 360 from the, from the school. Where would that be? Is that at the edge of one of the array? Who's the nearest inverter?
Yes, again, there's nothing actually in three shows, but it's on the eastern side of the array. And I think the second row up, there should be an assistance label by the drawing there at 300 feet. It's on sheet.
Yeah, it's on the second row.
The second row, it's on sheet three.
It's not labeled, but it's like the closest one, but it's this thing in line there.
So, we will be, just to keep a better setback for the school, we already put the inverters on the eastern side of the array.
Okay. And is this, I think you mentioned there's a series of arrays, correct?
String inverters, what we were referring to.
I'm sorry. And so, is that the furthest, I mean, do you need that? It could be any further than you're putting it now.
You need to have the string inverters handle certain amount of pans. Typically, it's a couple rows, unless they're real long rows, then you need more than each one. But based on the length of these rows, we thought we needed one on that second, on that second row of pans.
Okay. Did, I know the question, I think at the last hearing, came up about megahertz. Have you come up with any additional information to describe the impact of megahertz relative to this project?
We're not able to get any megahertz information.
Speak into the mic.
We're not able to get any megahertz information from the inverter manufacturer, and we're not able to conduct the study. What we were, we're able to do is do quite a bit of information on megahertz and dirt barriers, and we think the distance from the inverter and the six-foot firm plus the heavy weight that we're proposing, we really do not believe in any megahertz. Any sound would be audible from the school. And we did, I personally did hours of research trying to make sure that any student at the school would not be affected. And it's definitely our intent to keep it that way. But as far as the study that I conducted and my company conducted on string inverters, we're not able to compare that.
Would you consider submitting to a survey, a sound survey, to use as a benchmark, then to make sure that we have a certain level?
Close construction, we're, it would be amenable to you, to us, or you guys, with us paying for it, conduct the sound survey and then make sure that that baseline is maintained. You know, I think the preferable way that we'd like to do it is if someone has an issue and conduct a study, make sure it's on part of a base study instead of an annual study for the sake of it. But it's amenable to that.
Aside from the screening, I see that it's the school, and forgive me, I don't recall, are there other property owners for which screening is required for this project that has been, needed to be addressed?
Basically, it was right in here, the rest of...
Speak into the mic.
That's, the result we were screening, we had proposed originally was along Plain Street to screen the stormwater basin, on view on the school. Everywhere else, there's just a sufficient amount of natural vegetation that's being left in place between any of the development and houses.
And what's the setback you have? I see, I see the tree line from your lot line. What's the average setback for other properties?
Well, the place in here is 50 feet or so. Here, it's probably 30 feet between the access road and the property line. But the panels are all meter setback of 50 feet at minimum. But the limit of clearing is, it'll be closer to the property line in this area here. But there's no, there's no structures, no, this is all open space in this area here. And on the residential property lines, again, we're keeping, as you can see, a good buffer, at least 50 feet on all locations of naturally screened wooded areas.
So, on the, the western side along the road that you have for the roadway for the fire department, there's, what's the distance from that line, the lot line, to the first array of panels?
You're talking about distance from the property line to the panels?
Yeah.
Oh, the closest is, I think, 52 feet. That being there is one case here.
Okay, thank you.
Question, please, back to the frequency question that Orin asked. Have you used this string inverter on other projects?
Yeah, we use string inverters.
For this particular, the same venture?
We use the same string inverter on every project. I think we just have a single project that we're developing, that's in development right now, that involves battery storage, and that has a central inverter by necessity. Every other project would use string inverters.
Okay, so is it not possible to obtain some sort of measurement on the frequency being emitted by your, any of your existing projects that is comparable to what is being installed here?
A megahertz, I mean, that's a good question. We talked to some people who measure sound, they don't measure megahertz. We talked to some people who measure sound, they don't measure megahertz. There might be a way, Paul, and you can talk to sound engineers. Do any of you do measurements on megahertz over distance?
I believe they could, can, yes. And that would be determined by an acoustic engineer and...
Again, I don't have any thought that this might be from the school with all provisions to be taken. If the panel removals fully confirm the vegetation that we proposed, again, if we can find a proper way to do it, we're willing to test the sound after installation and make sure that the sound does not increase. And we think any increase would be due to improper operations of mediums, which it will be a fault fund, and we'd be willing to take responsibility for that.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, I am concerned with the proximity that it's a school as, you know, one of the closest, you know, budding properties, and the issue of the, you know, the range of frequency that may be emitted. So if there's supporting documentation you can provide that would give us some assurance or an expectation of what we perhaps could expect, that would be most helpful in us rendering a decision. I'm not comfortable saying, well, let's install and then see if there's a problem. That's not the time to understand that question. So I would ask that you continue the diligence of trying to obtain what that frequency range would be of the equipment on site.
I can add, when we discussed this with the acoustic engineer, he recommended, or recommended, he advised that we could, as a condition prior to construction, conduct a sound study to get your background noise and then an estimation of what these inverters could do theoretically, and then have post-construction. You know, then that could, again, lead to some modifications if there were a problem. But then we would also want that to be done, a study to be, an evaluation to be done once the project is built and have the ability, and if there were an issue in reality, to mitigate.
Right.
Would you be amenable to a condition that there be no discernible sound off-site at any megahertz level?
That's a good question. What would the condition say that mitigation would be? I mean, if it's to add extra, you know, burden or foliage, we would be amenable to that, as it is now, and we've reached our limit, we've financially removed panels and inverters from the site. So we can do other forms of mitigation as a condition of use. I don't know if reasonable of additional capacity is...
I think that the reality that we're struggling with, and perhaps to some extent you as well, we haven't built any solar facilities. We have one in town that has, that has created some issues with sound. Hindsight being twenty-twenty, we would have handled that differently. I don't know what the answer is. It's not my job to figure out what the answer is. I'm not a sound engineer. So I'd put the onus on you. Would you be amenable to a condition that basically says there'd be no discernible sound? Whatever that takes, whether you ramp down the, the, the speed or effectiveness of the equipment, whether you put sound barriers up, I, I'm just asking whether you'd be amenable to that as a condition. So whatever it takes, maybe it takes nothing, maybe it's gonna be fine. It may generate some sound on your site, but off-site, you know, at the property line, can't hear anything, then it will all happen. But I guess the question is...
From Plain Street, from the school boundary, what's the...
Anywhere at the edge of your property, if I were to stand there three years from now, and I could hear something, then that's a violation of the, of the condition that I'd hope you'd agree to.
Yeah, so we're trying to, trying to break it down exactly. So from the property line here, and you're gonna have inverters here, and there's gonna be no people, no residences, and anything, from this fifty feet, you probably will be able to hear an inverter. But from this three hundred, equally, you won't. So it's important for me to narrow down this condition to something that's reasonable.
Well, I mean, the problem I have is I'm not good at telling the future. I don't know what may or may not be ultimately built there over the course of the next twenty, thirty years, and I don't want to render somebody's property useless.
This is your land.
I'm sorry?
This is town land.
Okay.
And conservation land.
Okay.
So, you know, we hope that it'll stay conservation land, to our expectation.
But in terms of some of the other properties, again, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to take the lazy man's way out of this, rather than bring on all types of engineers who are gonna do what ifs. If you were, if you were to agree to a condition that there be no discernible sound from any other property other than town property and the school, then the onus is on you to do whether, you know, whatever has to be done. That's, I'm asking whether...
I could just ask a question. The D E P has a, basically regulations about noise that doesn't allow any project to exceed background levels by more than ten decibels at the property line. That's the standard for whether or not a project is in compliance with the state's noise regulations.
And I'm aware of that regulation, and to be candid, that's problematic at a whole host of different levels. So I don't, my point in asking the question is, is so that we don't have to rely on D E P's ten-decibel background, over background. I'm trying to find an easier way for us to put a condition that you'd be agreeable to that would negate the, any level of sound beyond the property line.
The question would be how we would measure it, because we have to, I mean, we take noise meter out here in any location, you're gonna hear noise. Whether it comes from the radio from the background, background, that's part of the concern without having...
Yeah, I'm talking about, not background, but anything above background.
I mean, we're definitely amenable that we can't, that you can't hear this from the school or from, from the street. You know, but there might be some issues here, and I don't think we wanna agree to a blanket no noise. We'll agree to a no increase, as we've already told you, and we're amenable to if anyone can't hear it, to add mitigation measures to mitigate to the best of our ability. But, I mean, we can't just lose a project like this because there might be a small amount of ambient noise coming from an inverter to a property line that nobody lives at, if that makes sense.
The answer's no. Again, I'm just, I'm just asking.
In those terms, you know, like I said, we'll do everything to the best of our ability, but I think in the words you used, I err on the bell.
Yeah, I don't question your intentions, but we all know where the road to hell leads based on good intentions, and we've learned, at least I've learned, from another project that I don't want to see it repeated. So I don't know how we get around that. And I am not comfortable with a D E P's ten-decibel above background. That's a problem for a whole host of different industries.
Joe, that'd be a good suggestion.
Yep.
So we've already kind of established that you're amenable to doing a background noise study and to doing additional mitigation based on how that's evaluated. If, after a background study and acoustic engineer maps out where they think the project might increase noise levels beyond a specific level, whatever level we say the engineer, the acoustic engineer sets, whether that's ten, like the D E P, or five, or whatever, additional mitigation is added to the project to compensate for that in that specific location, assuming that it makes sense?
That's what makes sense.
And then do a follow-up measurement after, so it's your measure before, you have an engineer map out what you think it's going to be when you install it, and you install and you verify, so it's kind of a trust but verify system to that. Is that a process that makes sense?
That's a process that we do.
Other questions? Yes, Dr. Diana.
Anything to change about the superintendent of schools in Boston? I'm sorry, Tom, yeah, you did keep the temperatures down online, so I appreciate that very much. Just a couple of thoughts on the question that members are calling out. The D E P's internal finding noise studies that you're going to all come to a agreement on, I can assure you that because I had a basic project situation from the original new project where age-back system in the building, we did over thirty thousand dollars worth of acoustic studies as we come to the end of that project, and we just couldn't come to a realisation of agreement, because when I sat under it, it said it's, it sounds like I'm having a headboard, but when the actual scientific research is done, it says it's within normal. So just keep that in mind. And that's the reason why I came in today, for two reasons, if that made number one, to talk about whether there's some anecdotal information about certain types of students, certain types of levels, I call them, where students are having some issues around that frequency issues. It's anecdotal because the research is still not there, because this is so new, but it is likely to be seen more and more, that's what my colleagues have been saying. So this question about is important. And so in the report, as I stated the last meeting, the findings of C E C, which is the National Energy Center, which is not really scientific enough information, is from two thousand and twelve. And I made a point then, that that's information utilizing a different type of converter, number one, it's part of this information that we have, and not based upon the new similar inverters that are being placed on this park. We are better thankful to the number of issues that we put forward that this company, Duke Dan and Rich had absolutely mentored and more. We appreciate that. But as the superintendent of schools, that report also says, quote, "Faint inverter alarm could be heard at some locations." So the reason why you think that future mitigation of some sort within the agreement that you showed pose is important, whatever that means at the baseline, I'm not sure, because I don't think you're gonna find it, as someone who's been looking for that on now two projects, it's just back out there. Because this, and it's kind of scary in some ways, only because this is such a scientific error. And I've heard more words than I've heard self-educational truthfully, because I wasn't a science guy, in this debate discussion that took, puts a lot with the other project in town. But it did say for the Christian South Harbor and the residential solar of the Mass Harbor on Sharon from two thousand and twelve, a faint inverter could be heard at some locations, even though the whole report says it's not at fifty to a hundred and fifty feet, which would meet the requirements of the setbacks that they put with the project, the project, and moving some of the inverters and losing, I think, his four rows, which came from a recommendation from one of the boardrooms. So that's one part. The second part is, I am not a specialist at all in decommissioning, but as somebody who deals with labor costs, and I just don't see up two percent per year as an increase on decommissioning, leading the market from seven one thousand to one hundred and six thousand over twenty eight isn't even a reasonable number, especially considering that there's the potential for some environmental issues with panels that are being studied and looked at. Again, I don't think it's a reason for the park to have to go forward, that's not why I'm here, but I do think that the actual cost of this part of decommissioning is realistic. And thank you, Chair, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tony, we're around the sixty Plain Street, which is adjacent to the property.
Could you just point out where you are, just on that map, on that plant?
Pointing at it.
Okay.
I have a son that grows algae lots, so I'm concerned about his health. And I've just been two or three hundred, ten thousand lots. I think it's running around outside of the park, it's about six feet. And also, how many trees are they gonna have to cut down in passing in that five-foot span? Four or five hundred trees? What's gonna happen to all of that water? It's probably gonna saturate towards my room. Also, issues with the dust levels, how low they are, what's it gonna do to the water? What's it gonna do to the roads? It's gonna be chasing towards the school or towards my house. We don't know. Common sense says it's gonna do something. And finally, I'm not sure if it's legal, but a lot of stories by yesterday, they have the road about four hundred feet going back into the park. You have a word for a second?
Uh, okay.
Please. A lot of that's great.
Yeah, the request of the town consulting engineer related to soil testing on the site, so what the gentleman is referring to is just getting that out to the back porch of the site for the test bits.
That was from Concon or Chris?
Yes, and their consulting engineer.
And we can talk after, and I can help you understand anything, any questions that you have. The Conservation Commission's address, wildlife, we are using native grasses on land to keep the roads in. Someone's been in solar for six or seven years, they, they love the solar fields a lot, and we appreciate it. So we've never had a problem with roads exiting and annoying and more so entering, like shields from, you know, predators. You know, we, if there is a screaming issue from the house, you know, we were that, you know, trying to have everybody, there's things we can do to make sure that any neighbors view is not affected, and we're amenable to that as well. We did, you know, put letters and all this in homes, saying that we were open to do any reasonable mitigation, to make them happy with the project, and we still stand by that.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
My name's Brad Knighten, I live at fifty-nine Plain Street, and I guess that really stops straight from this. Sure question, how many panels are going on?
In the mic, please.
It's at forty-three thirty. Can we ask them right now? I mean, I was looking at, you know, a few different places, at least twenty-five yards, and also, you know, they were developed. And I would anticipate it's gonna be more expensive just due to the strict, you know, recycling or whatever the cost could be. So decommission will definitely be, you know, an issue for us. Like Tony was saying, I am definitely super concerned about the water table around the area. So we're gonna be cutting down at least six-hundred trees. It's been found over where we're being for years and years, that cutting down these many trees will increase the water table in the dry season, it's seventy inches, in the wet season, you can get like two inches of water over everything. This is the most pronounced when trees are cut down on uplands, they're next to, you know, vogs or barges or anything along those lines, so this is obviously a big spot for that. The property also addresses a river over there, a bunch of this wader or bumber or whatever that is. The property is also surrounded by weapons, so this is a big spot, this is a big spot called... The property is also surrounded by weapons. So this is a big spot, this is a big spot for all this water to work itself into. So in order to sell on the northern page says, there's a problem of flooding that would get much worse if weapons are not able to hold or absorb floodwater. All these trees that you cut down will have a big impact on that. So we're starting on those studies, had plenty of those many trees, with an additional fifteen percent precipitation in the area. So, I mean, living around here, practically being on the water table already, it's a big concern for me. Everybody around here, everybody who is down river all the way by Plank Street and all the way down. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Willie Francis, sixty-sixth Plank Street. There's been a lot of discussion about noise levels and megahertz and frequencies. And one study certainly negated others, so. But I think if you have enough empirical evidence to know that. For myself, I'm outside my yard during the summer and fall of the generous spring, and kids are playing in the schoolyard. I can hear them just as though they're almost right near my yard. Some problems in a lot of different ways, and I don't really think that we can actually mitigate it enough to actually have to diminish any sort of annoyance or disruption to people living in that area. The second thing is, my question is, what exactly is its purpose? Let's say, what's the purpose of having this small solar farm? What does it benefit the community? What does it benefit the neighborhood? You need redundant system. You're not going to get rid of the electrical grid system. So what exactly is the purpose? You're going to sell electricity back to national grid? Now there are benefits. I know that under the development pantry, there was a big push of solar energy. It's been, it's the greatest thing in the world for some people. But if you want to have it on your rooftop, that's one thing. But when you want to actually impact the environment, a school, a neighborhood, that's something else. I'm not for this project at all. I wish the gentleman the best in finding a new area that this should not be for the time. I would suggest that it not be for the benefit of the community and for the school. Thank you.
It's quarter of eleven. I would entertain a motion to either continue or whatever your pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
There's been a motion to continue. I swing to April second.
Yes.
Yes.
And there was a second, further discussion. All in favor of continuing until April second?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, we'll continue with this until April second. Again, location and time to be determined. Thank you. Good night. I'm sorry. Was there a motion to adjourn? I'm getting ahead of myself.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.